Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen of March 21st, 2023. This is going to be a hybrid meeting, and I'll read the required notice and to the record momentarily. This meeting can be watched live on YouTube, but on Channel 18 it cannot because there's technical difficulties dealing with the Comcast equipment. They've been notified and hopefully we'll rectify those problems as soon as possible. But the meeting will be recorded so that it can be played at a later time on Channel 18. The notice for the hybrid meeting is as follows. This is the formally advised that is required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency, signed into law in June 16th, 2021, as extended by special legislation dated July 16th, 2022. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below, and the alternative access information is on the Yarmouth website. Please join me in the public. First item is announcements, and we have, I see, our town clerk, Mary, is at the podium.
Good evening, Mary Maslowsky, Town Clerk. We are headed into election season, so just a few notices and reminders. Our annual town election is scheduled for May 16th, 2023. We will be doing vote by mail for that election if anyone is looking to have a ballot mailed to them. The new application is on our webpage under the Town Clerk's page. You do need to renew that every single year, so if someone filed one last year, it doesn't apply for this year. So the only election that we are really having is the town. I just wanted to point that out to people. We have five open seats on our election calendar this year. It is one seat for the Board of Selectmen, two seats for DY Regional School District, and two seats on the Housing Authority. One is a five-year term. The second is to fill a vacancy created when Mr. Reed passed away earlier this year. The last day to pull nomination papers is Friday at 5:00. So if, just a friendly announcement out there, if anyone is looking to take out nomination papers for this year's town election, the Town Clerk's office will be open until 5:00 to service them on Friday. Don't want to forget, a friendly reminder about annual town meeting, which will be Tuesday, the 25th of April. It's being held at 6:00, I believe is what you're going to call it for, at Mattakee's Middle School. So just a friendly reminder for that as well. The last day to register to vote for that is Saturday, April 15th, at 5:00 PM. We will be open here at Town Hall in my office on that Saturday in order to take any voter registrations for individuals. They can also go online. We have a hyperlink both on our webpage and also at the Secretary of State's office to register to vote. You can also check your registration status that way as well. You've also probably seen that the census finally went out. They should be hitting your mailboxes this week. If they haven't already, they can be mailed back to us or returned to us. And there is also a Town Seal Committee questionnaire included. It does, that can be returned together with it. We will separate that out for the Town Seal Committee. And although it does have a signature line on it, if people choose, do not want to sign it, they don't have to. So those items are all kind of our current list of current events, and I'll take any questions if anybody has anything that they...
Mary, the return date for the nomination papers is generally the following Tuesday?
Following Tuesday, so I believe that's the 28th.
And at what time would the Town Hall be receiving those, up to what time?
Until 5:00 PM. We will be open until Tuesday, on Tuesday, March 28th, until 5:00 PM to take those papers.
And people have to get, what, was it 50 certified signatures?
Fifty certified signatures.
Okay.
So it is, and I also failed to mention, there's a moderator position as well. So we do have, the moderator's position is on the ballot as well, and I just realized I had forgotten to mention that as well.
One selectman, two school committee...
One selectman, two school committee...
Two housing authority and the town moderator.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions for Mary? No? Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Can't be reminded enough about this stuff. Thank you. Public comment. Is there anybody wishing to be recognized for public comment? Vita Morris.
Vita Morris. I was going to speak on this subject two weeks ago, but because Mark was not present, and it has a lot to do with him, actually, I waited until he's here now, and this is on the subject of the Title V change in the regulations that is so preposterous that I don't know how anybody could have been in favor of it. But anyway, I was surprised when I heard about the letter that the town was writing, a copy of which, which happened to be a draft, not even the final copy, was sent to, by Mark, to the Ed Alhambert's program on the radio, and he read some excerpts, and because he was the sender, I was sort of under the impression that he agreed with the thoughts in that letter. But then, it turns out, when the commissioners finally decided to chime in, and I would have thought that those, that was the group that should have been the first one to jump in there and, on behalf of the constituents of Cape Cod and Yarmouth as such, you know, and that to come to find out that they are totally in favor of it. It says, "We write to you today to support the goals of the proposed Title V regulations." So I'm wondering just exactly where Mark stands, and especially since he is running for reelection, I believe, to this particular seat that he is sitting in right now, because I find that to be really most obnoxious and, I mean, are you going to tell in your platform? Do you have the fact that the talk is of at least $30,000 for any of the, if you were to have followed those regulations that they were talking about? And how many people can afford something like that? And this business of, oh, well, we'll, maybe we'll get some interest-free loans or something like, so what? You still owe the $30,000 or $40,000 that you have to pay up. I don't think that's, that's a proper excuse for this. So I'm very concerned, and I was hoping that Mark would have the good sense to vacate one of the chairs that he's holding right now because there are constant conflicts of interest for him, and he already had to recuse himself as a commissioner from the dispersal of the funds, I guess it was the COVID funds or something like that. Whatever it was, it was a very large amount, and the commissioners, again, out of $41 million, they deigned to give the towns $10 million, and when the delegates decided that they wanted to propose that half of that amount, $20 million, be given to the towns directly, they got such a lecture from Ms. Lyons, I guess it was, about their place and their, and what they could and couldn't say or do. It's just amazing, and when you're dealing, when you're parcelling out those kind of monies for you to recuse yourself because otherwise you would have really been thrown off the, one of the positions, I think is absolutely outrageous. By the way, please leave the town committees, commissions alone. You're constantly interfering and giving your suggestions.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Tom, Tom O'Nick, otherwise known as Tom Nicconello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom Nicconello tonight in this very historic village, come from Bass River, and I just want to just make a couple of comments. First would be to the town clerk. I did get my town seal notice, and I was thrilled. I'm actually thrilled because we have more than one seal. We have ocean, and we have harbor seals, and then we have our town seal. So, I mean, that's, for 131 years, our town seal has been like that, and yeah, I guess it's time to make it more accurate. So I hope everyone takes it seriously and fills up the information and sends it back because that's who we are, and I think that's who the future generation wants to be. My next comment, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, is a big shout out to all the volunteers for the parade, as you know. Thanks to you folks. We had a beautiful day, weather-wise. It was, it was hearty. It was hearty. It was New England-type. It wasn't, you know, in shorts and no shoes, but we did pull off a great event, thanks to all those community members and our chairman, who does a wonderful job. We did keep the dentists in town supplied very well. They're going to have some work ahead of them, and for those people that were worried about the candy, I think we did pick it all up, so there shouldn't be an issue. You know, to see those little kids on the side of the street and be enjoying what we as a wonderful community can offer is truly remarkable and has a lot of value, at least to my, my saying. I mean, I devote a lot of hours to it because I'm in the entertainment business, and my job is to entertain people, and the young families and kids are just, you know, it's what we do. But our volunteers are outstanding. We have some tonight here that, for the town volunteers, as you all know, we would, we'd be in trouble if we didn't have volunteers for our town. Volunteers for parade, volunteers for the winter carnival. It's just extraordinary that we have wonderful citizens giving up their time for the love and devotion of our community. We used to recognize them. Hopefully, one day, we can get back to that. It's very important that we come together and spend some time with these people besides, you know, doing their job and get to know them because, you know, one day, we're not going to be here. My last comment, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, is pertaining to the wonderful job that the town administration and the select board is going through. As everyone, you may have seen, you may not have seen, the agenda tonight with over 450 pages, but that is remarkable work. It's remarkable work that our volunteers and people in this building and the select board can have some type of vision for us in the future. There's some hard questions in there from the Finance Committee and the Capital Committee, and they need to be answered, and they need to be processed. Future can stay stable. It's really important. But, you know, without those volunteers, they're just crazy. But the one thing I want to just make a point about in that article is the wastewater. It's extremely important, as you know, our great-great-grandfathers didn't have the luxury. They had some tough times with typhoid, some of the other diseases, and then we modified to what we have today. It was after the war between 1929 and 1945, bathrooms took off. It's quite a remarkable product. Have we got all the answers? No, we don't have all the answers. Are we still learning? Yes, we're still learning, right? We have PFAS, we have nitrogen. It's a lot better than what we used to have, right? Cholera, typhoid, and typhus. That's what we were plagued with before. Now we're plagued with nitrogen and PFAS. And the only way that we can protect our water supply is doing what we're doing, and we're going to do that, and we're going to eliminate these agents so we can actually become healthier, right? Water and air, that's what's extremely important. You can have a planet that has air, but if there's no water, there's no life. And now water is extremely important, and this article is extremely important, and I hope everybody backs behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I respond just quickly to clarify a comment made by a prior speaker?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. This is concerning the DEP regulations. I want to make it abundantly clear that I have been a very strong critic of the DEP proposal. Just about everybody on this board and elsewhere is well aware of it, and I was proud to have a hand in drafting the letter that the board submitted on behalf of the town of Yarmouth. I submitted that letter in draft form to other boards suggesting that they too adopt a very similar position to that adopted by this board. Not all the boards that I had contacted actually took the same position as the town of Yarmouth, including the Board of Regional Commissioners. They took a different tact. In spite of my strong concerns, they decided to go on record with something different. So the reality is, is I stand behind my strong concerns. I've been very vocal in this board and in public meetings about the issues that are at hand, and if anybody has a question about what I've been doing or my involvement, by all means, I have office hours every month, first Friday every month, South Yarmouth Library, I'm there, and I get a lot of visitors, and I'm happy to answer any questions. So thank you.
Anyone else on public comment?
Couple of names on the TV.
Okay, let's go, go to the board. I can't...
Norm Holcomb and Joe Glenn.
All right, let's save Joe for last. No, I'm kidding. Joe, go ahead.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I can, Joe, and I'm sure that you're very happy to hear about the recent Supreme Court decision that says we can't put unreasonable restrictions on public comment, but go ahead.
Oh, is that right? I thought you were going to say, you're going to save the best for last, but I just wanted to echo your sentiments of a week ago, our last meeting, I think, in the regards to our passing of our neighbor and my colleague, John Reed, a good friend and over 40-year teacher, and his wife was a 33-year-plus teacher in Yarmouth at Station Ave. So I wanted to echo those sentiments because I didn't do that before, but it's a great loss to our board and a great loss to our community. So I know that I spoke to the town administrator about it, and he had some very con words also. So a lot of the members of the community might not know. I did want to let you know, Mr. Chairman, that the Channel 18 is, and I came in late because you weren't on Channel 18, so I only caught part of the town clerk's messages. So anything you said before that, but Channel 18 is not up and running right now, if you didn't know.
We know that, Joe. We announced that at the beginning of the meeting, but I am told it can be seen live on YouTube.
Okay, great. And then one final thing, Mr. Chairman. You're going to have the DUI Schools Superintendent there. I will be in the audience, and you can promote me as you like if you have any questions as a school committee member, but I'll be out here in the lobby waiting. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it, and thank you for your kind remembrance about John Reed.
You're welcome.
Norm, you are recognized.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, Norm.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to talk about a proposal that has been brought up and that is kind of deja vu back to when I, before I was on the select board, to develop the property at Forest Road. In August 1985, the town meeting, it had to be a special town meeting, authorized the Board of Selectmen to transfer the 19 acres of town land to the Yarmouth Housing Authority to construct conventional or concrete living facilities at that location. That meeting had considerable discussion, and the intent of the meeting was, or the intent was to limit the development to less than 30 units of senior affordable housing. Now, I tried today to get the details of that meeting in the archives, and Mary has agreed to try to find that. Apparently, it is stuck away someplace, so, but in any case, that vote was followed up by an amendment essentially in 2009. And so here, here it was 24 years later, and nothing had been done by the Yarmouth Housing Authority. So in 2009, an article was passed, and it said, "To see if the town will vote to authorize development of affordable family rental housing in addition to affordable senior rental housing on land owned by the Yarmouth Housing Authority in South Yarmouth." And it, yada, yada, gives you, gives you the details of the land court information. So fast forward three years later, and residents at Captain's Village presented a petition to rescind that vote in 2009. And their point to the town was, the original proposal was to construct senior housing and was for no more than 30 units, whereas what was envisioned in, after this amendment was to be, was voted, was that there was going to be something like 70 units at that location. Anyway, so, so town meeting in 2012 rescinded that amendment. So it all goes back to what was passed in 1985. And, you know, I've heard that there's been a statement that, well, the town can't do anything about that, you know, any, any development on that property. But I know from some recent conversations that about 50 units are being proposed for that property, and that an RFP might go out to that effect. Now, you know, and apparently, it's not going to be limited to senior housing. Now, I've heard that the town is saying that, well, we can't do anything about that. Well, in fact, you can, because, you know, when the amendment was proposed, Article 47, to amend the original 1985 vote, it was clear to the town, it was clear to the select board, to the then-town administrator, Robert Lawton, and to the legal counsel, that they had to amend the original vote that took in place in 1985. So it was clear to them that that 1985 vote was what restricted, based on all the discussion that took place at town meeting, restricted the development to senior affordable housing. If it wasn't clear to them, why the heck would they even bring an article to town meeting for approval? They just simply would allow things to move ahead. So it was very clear to the then-select board and town administrator and legal counsel that, in fact, they had to pass an amendment to the 1985 town meeting. Well, as I said, the 2009 article was rescinded. We're back to the 1985 wording, and I just think that the town should stand behind the intent of the original town meeting article in 1985 and should restrict that development to senior housing, if, if any, anything at all. I think there are certainly very good arguments, considering the fact that that property is within the water protection area of the town. The town's water is already critically endangered for a lot of different reasons, and, and putting 50 some odd units of new housing in one spot and having all that affluent going into the, that area just does not seem like a tenable development. And I think, and housing authorities are bound by state statute to comply with town regulations. That means all, all the zoning regulations and so forth are, housing authorities are bound to, to obey them. So I think, I think particularly with regard to water quality and the select board, and point out to the public, are the water commissioners for the town, that the select board should take the position that, look, we don't want a substantial new development in that area. A better idea would be, you know, take some of the excess property that's going to develop in the next year or two, either at Mattakee's or ME Small, and dedicate a small amount of that or some part of that to the Yarmouth Housing Authority in exchange for that 19 acres of property, and turn that 19 acres into conservation land so that it can't be built on and, and will not endanger the water supply. The other issue is, is a moral issue. The Captain's Village area was developed at a time when the town was expanding dramatically, and sound didn't have an awful lot of staff to attend to the tremendous amount of development that was going on. And I think, I can't state for a fact, but I think what happened is they lost track of what was going on in Captain's Village. Half of that, that development suffers from flooding on a, almost annual basis, and, and some, some homes in that area have to run sump pumps 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That flooding situation has come before the town and been studied by the town a number of times, and back, I wish I could remember, I think it's 2004, the town had a study, and it would cost $4 million to alleviate the flooding in that neighborhood. A substantial development at Forest Road would increase the amount of potential flooding that could occur by, by, by putting that much into the aquifer from a development there on that site. They also would tear down trees, which, just ask anyone, how, how much water trees absorb, and, and those trees are protecting Captain's Village from an even worse flooding situation. The town has, I think, a moral responsibility to the Captain's Village residents to protect their homes. And if you're not going to allocate some funds to fixing the flooding problem there, then at least you can avoid worsening this situation. And that goes for the water supply as well. Don't allow a development that will worsen the water, water quality issues in the town of Yarmouth. So in summary, I think, I think you have the tools available to you. And I support affordable housing. I was on the Affordable Housing Trust for three years. We did some, some terrific work, including the redevelopment of the Cavalier Project. And I think there's ample opportunity for other pieces of property to be developed and to be turned over to the Yarmouth Housing Authority to, for them to manage and to earn revenues from, without endangering that, the Captain's Village area anymore than, than already exists. So I hope you'll take some action on this. So I hope you'll take some action on this. I hope that if you have, have already approved the housing plan that the Affordable Housing Trust has proposed, that you will reconsider that approval. And, and ask the Affordable Housing Trust to slow down, to, to look back at the nineteen eighty-five town meeting and to go by those results which were to limit the, the development of that site. But I, I think you have a lot of tools available to you. And I think you have a moral responsibility to the people in, in Captain's Village to protect them as well as to protect our water supply in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Appreciate it.
Can I add something to what he was just saying?
Ask something?
No, just add, there-
Make it very quick, Vita.
Well, there was, back in either oh-nine or twelve or whenever this thing had last come up, sort of, somebody asked for the, a study to be made of the water table in that particular plot of land that they're talking, that he was just talking about. And I was told by one of the then-select persons that the, the results were such that nothing would ever be allowed to be built there, period. So can somebody try to find out, you know, what, what happened with that water table study?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on the screen other than Joe Glenn and Norm Holcomb? No? Okay. The next item, if anybody is here on, on the amendment to the entertainment license for the Big Nick's Ride at the Sea Dog Brew Pub, that matter is not going to go forward tonight. We received a request through our licensing office to take that off the list. Tentatively, it's supposed to come back on May second, but it has to be re-advertized again and started from scratch. So a butters will get new notices of that hearing. My understanding is that they are also going to add in that same application permission to serve alcohol on two additional days that they're, that they're seeking to extend their activity over for the Big Nick's Ride. So I don't know if that was their motivation, but I think all those matters will be heard at the same time. Again, tentatively, I may second, but whatever date it is heard will be advertised and a butters and those that are entitled a legal notice will be re-noticed of the hearing. So that brings us, it's always good to skip something. You can make up time. You can make up some time. Okay. So next is the public hearings. And I probably do have some notices in here to read on those, don't I? These were legally noticed hearings. Get rid of all these entertainment things. Here we go. So the first hearing is Town of Yarmouth Notice of Public Hearing on Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Plan, Acting under Yarmouth Town Charter, Section seven dash five. A public hearing will be held on March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three with the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee and Capital Budget Committee to receive comments on the FY twenty twenty-four town and school budgets and capital improvement plan. The hearing will be held in the hearing room of Yarmouth Town Hall and via Zoom beginning at six P M. Complete copies of the FY twenty twenty-four budget and capital improvement plans are available beginning March tenth, twenty twenty-three on the town's website, www.yarmouth MA US. So that's it for that notice. So we are ready to proceed, wherever you are. The public will have an opportunity to ask questions and to comment at this hearing and Finance Committee, Capital Budget, Cape Cod Technical Regional School, the Dennis Shumith Regional High School and, and the District Improvement Financing, otherwise known as DIF. All those matters will be open for public input.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Cox, Chair of the Finance Committee. Nice to see you all. I'm joined by Richard Simon, a recent addition to the Finance Committee who has graciously volunteered himself to be part of the executive committee as our, do we decide on secretary or clerk? But he's really been very helpful since he joined and of course, our Assistant Town Administrator who is keeping us on track throughout the, the budget process. And we've been so grateful to have Bob's participation throughout. And before we get going, I also just want to say, you know, while he, he wasn't part of this budget process, we are so grateful to Ed Centeo for all of his years of service to the town. And I know certainly for me, as, when I was first starting on the Finance Committee, he was tremendously helpful, especially as we were going into the pandemic. It was certainly a learning curve there. So you have in your packets a couple of items. One is the memo from myself to the Chair of Board of Selectmen that references our votes. I, I am told we have a transcription error on the last item. It should read one-five rather than five-one. For the vote. But, and I'm happy to go over any of those that you all would like. We have, you have also included in your packet our report to town meeting, which really goes over a lot of this. So I'm going to go, start going in unless there's anything that you wanted to start with.
Whatever you wish, Stephanie.
Great. Thanks a lot, Mr. Chairman. So we started off with our, our, trying to continue the standardization of the presentations from the town departments. Something that had been going on for a couple of years, but we tried to update and get a little bit more consistent. So includes sort of some of the, the typical questions, but we also have been adding some other items in there over the, the past couple of years. One being, especially as we are always going to be faced with revenue challenges, are there any revenue-producing items that your departments can, can do? And the example I always use is the Town of Barnstable offers regional services for weights and measures and, and does it for the rest of the, the towns, including us. So those questions we will continue to ask. Another one, just after having some surprising transfers come in towards the end of last fiscal year, we've been consistently asking department heads mid-year, as they come in for the budget, what, how are you doing for this current fiscal year? Is there, are there any unanticipated budgetary problems that we should be aware of, that we should be on the lookout for? It's always good for us to know and be able to anticipate that. And one of the other newer questions that we asked this year is, was about, how are you defining success? Because, while we don't have any desire to create busy work for the town departments, we have noticed that there's a, a not necessarily a, there may be some key, key performance indicators that they are using internally, but we don't know what they are. So a lot of times when we get data from them, there isn't context. There isn't context of this is what it was last year or the year before. This is what our benchmark is, et cetera. So we're not asking anyone to go out there and necessarily develop a standardized set of KPIs, but we are asking that whatever you might be using internally, that you share that in future meetings with the Finance Committee so that we're all on the same page. So as we went to the, through this budget, Bob's been doing a great job with meeting your goals that you have laid out as well as the goals that we have laid out over the last, over, in our last year's report. And, you know, we're looking at a relatively level-funded budget. There are a few exceptions. And I, I am, I will say myself, for, just for myself, I will say I am pleased to see that we are kind of moving away from what I think was a, a period of austerity that hasn't helped us with being able in the long run to be in a, in a good position financially, as well as in terms of delivering services. So I see the changes that the town administrator and the assistant town administrator are putting forth in terms of making sure that you have the right support staff in place and you don't have department heads doing minutes and other things like that that are just not the highest and best use of those individuals as being great progress. So you'll, I'm not going to read these verbatim, but the things I'll just call out, you know, we, obviously we have some inflation impacts. The school budget is six percent higher than last year. And that was certainly a cause for concern, but thankfully the Governor Healy's House One budget that just came out in early March puts quite a bit more in local aid that keeps that cost under two-point-five percent. But it is something that we have to take a look at though, from what I've been reading. It looks like the Healy Driscoll administration, as well as the legislature, have decided to commit to some ed reform legislation that they did a year or two ago that will consistently increase the funding for schools, which is, is something to be certainly grateful for, given how modest our contribution is from the state. Let's see, we've got some new firefighters. Couple of new folks at DPW, Town Clerk's Office. Another one that again, I think is a great, a great addition here is having an additional communications person. Tonight's lack of being live on TV being all the evidence I'd say that you need for, for this position. But also, you know, I think one of the things that we have been seeing over the past couple of years is, you know, we have this decline in newspaper subscriptions and actual newspaper presence that, you know, the, and therefore the, the cost of advertising in those vehicles has been going up. So that's an additional cost for the municipality. And then we have, so aside from that fiscal cost, we have the intangible cost of fewer and few, fewer people being aware of what is going on in the town. Not every, I certainly am not going on a daily basis onto the town's website. I don't know many people who are. And so having someone who can do some proactive communications, I think is really going to be better for the overall health of our civic engagement. So here are a few other general comments, observations that we, as we were going through this process. I mentioned the KPIs. Consistency with indirect allocations, this is just something that, you know, as we have this change in consistency in Bob and Bill's leadership in, in developing the budgets, this is something that we hope over time can be taken a look at. But, you know, one of the things that's been noticed, again, thanks to my colleague, Richard Simon's keen eye. He really has a great eye for the numbers. I tend to look at the big picture and so we make a good, good team. The, there are some departments that will have OPEB in their budgets, others that won't. There are, and there's just some inconsistencies that we've noticed kind of throughout. So if you're comparing apples to apples, the DPW budget or the police budget to the community development budget or the library budget, it's just very hard to do. So that's just something for us to keep an eye on for the future. Similarly, just getting departments consistent with providing wage details for us for the, for the budget, that has been a little bit of a struggle that we hope we are setting the expectation for next year that everyone should be consistent with providing that. I think you all are familiar with the Matrix Report that was looking at the police and fire back in, what, twenty seventeen? So twenty seventeen are there, thereabouts. And there were a number of items that were identified as, as cost savings, things like having a consolidated dispatch, et cetera, that we will continue to raise as issues, especially now that we have a new police chief and a new fire chief. Another item that we, we think will be helpful, just good governance is transparency and accountability. One of the, the things that I think, again, with making sure we have the appropriate staffing within Town Hall to make sure that this stuff is, that we're on top of things, but making sure that we have a Finance Committee page, which, thank you, Bill, we recently had one updated that has the correct information. But making sure we're having all of our documents and packages up there for the public to be able to examine. As well as, one of the things that we recommend is that we take a look at some point over the next year or two about purchasing OpenGov. If you look at the Town of Brewster's website, which I'm sure Mark Forrest is very familiar with, you know, that you can get all layers of, of information very easily. And it's just something for us to take a, a look at when it comes to, again, that, that transparency and accountability. And then the last item on this slide is the water rates. So this is, again, a couple, we have just a couple of typos in our report. One references the Town of Falmouth. I think we meant to just say more generally that other towns have an approach to their water rates that there's more of a disincentive to overuse water. And sort of how this conversation came about is, and again, if, I, I want to clarify that our vote for the petition on Article thirty-six was actually one-to-five, not five-to-one. So we were against of that. And the conversation that came about there was last Fall Town Meeting when we had this discussion about being in a drought, making sure that there is a way to monitor and enforce over-usage of sprinkling, brought up the broader conversation of that's not the only determinant of overusing water. And again, Richard is someone who has really dug into the details and taken a look at what are our water rates, what are the, how are we pricing it? So he can explain a little bit better. If, do you mind if I just hand it over to you? Just maybe thirty-second overview.
Thirty-second overview.
You're gonna have a minute.
Okay. So there is some tremendous resources at the state level that talks about water pricing strategies in general. So there's two big concepts that they support. One is a, a meter rate which includes essential water support. So you don't get charged for the first like thirty, thirty thousand gallons because that's considered essential water. But then the rate for any volume over that is at a very high rate. So for example, Falmouth is at seven dollars and fifty cents per thousand, I believe, as opposed to our maximum rate, which is three-twenty. So it's really significant difference. The other thing that the state includes in their water pricing strategy is considering much like utilities, where they have a summer rate and a winter rate. So electricity or natural gas, depending on the season which is peak, you have a higher peak season rate. So those are just two of the concepts that were included in the state recommendations. And those, and that's available.
Thank you so much, Richard. So that concludes our overview of the budget. There are a couple, there, I do want to spend a little bit of time just talking about the big-ticket item on our town meeting warrant.
We have a big-ticket item?
We do. Yeah. We do, yeah.
Wouldn't happen to be about $207 million, would it?
That sounds just about right, and change, yeah. So, you know, the Board of Selectmen, the town administration, the finance committee, and I'm saying this more for the public than really for the Board of Selectmen, but, you know, we have, have been united in the fact that we have to stop kicking the can down the road when it comes to wastewater. Not only is it, are we, are we not being good stewards of our environment or our economy, but fiscally, it makes absolutely no sense. So we're, we're very pleased with the yeoman's work that Bill has done in, along with Jeff Colby and our consultants, and coming up with a really great model and funding sources. There are a couple of other suggestions that, just out of an abundance of caution, and as we look further on down the line, to just take a look at, some of which we understand are already being investigated, such as the EPA WIFIA funds, taking a look at the cost, if we could extend the funding beyond 30 years, and then a, then a state opt-in legislation on a model waters and sewer commission. Those are just some recommendations for us to take a look at. But for the public, I think it's really important for us to be very clear that the proposed, and I, there's some discussion about it tonight, that the proposed Department of Environmental Protection pending regulations really offer communities a very clear choice. A watershed permit, you know, going with a community approach to solve the wastewater problems, such as what we are pursuing, or if you live in a nitrogen-sensitive area, DEP is, is essentially going to force homeowners to upgrade their septic systems, even if you upgraded yours, you know, three years ago, you'd have to upgrade it to a new, more expensive, innovative, alternative system within five years. And the finance committee is, is particularly concerned about the impact that that would have on our seniors, our low-income households, how that could lead to an economic dislocation. It is, the approach of, of solving our wastewater problem lot by lot makes absolutely no sense when we compare the cost. So the bottom line, again, for the, for the residents at home, for the homeowners at home, wondering, what does all of this mean to me? The state, because of, we're in violation of the EPA Clean Water Act, because this has been a long protracted legal battle going on with DEP, the state is going to force us to stop kicking the can down the road when it comes to wastewater. The state is forcing us to take action and the, and it is going to cost money. That is the reality. The question is, is, is do we go with a more costly way, approach to it, or do we go with the, the town's approach, which is to save us money? And the, and the town's approach is going to save us money, save homeowners money in the following ways. If you look at the timeline, having to upgrade in the next five years versus depending on what phase you're in sometime over the next 30 years, and, and costs are amortized over that, that period, that's a really compressed time period. That's going to be more expensive. As an individual homeowner, you're not eligible for zero-interest state revolving fund loans, you're not eligible for all of the different economies of scale and the loan products and grants, the county wastewater fund, you know, as an individual homeowner, you can't apply for that, whereas the town can and can get that savings that goes into that great plan that Bill has put together. And, you know, another thing that I don't think people really talk about as much is if you, as an individual homeowner, upgrade your septic, and say you go through the county loan program, and you later sell your property, you've got to pay that upgrade loan off at the time of sale, as opposed to sewer, where the cost is passed on to the next owner. So regardless, it's, it's really just, there's no choice here. This is, this is common sense. The approach of Phase 1 is not, is an incredible approach. I'm actually seeing the pie chart that Bill's got, which I think he'll probably talk about later. And, you know, it's, it's something that we, at this point, have to do. It's a fiscally responsible approach, not only for the town, but for the taxpayers, and the finance committee stands by this proposal for town meeting. With that, I will take your questions.
Thank you. I'll first go to the board, then we'll go to the public, and then back to the board if they have anything else based on public input. Mark, you have any questions or comments?
No, I'd like to, I'm gonna defer until we hear from the public.
We hear from the public. Dan?
No questions at this time.
Okay.
Appreciate questions at this time. Great work, thank you.
A great, great report, a lot of good recommendations, but I'll hold off to hear what the public has to say.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? I see a hand. The hand belongs to Vita Morris.
Vita Morris, Ms. Cox, when you were speaking about the wastewater matter, I think I heard you say the word consultants in the plural. What are we talking about here? How many?
I'm not sure.
Excuse me, Vita, I didn't quite hear that part of your question where you said something is in the plural. What was it, what was?
Word consultants.
Consultants, plural, oh, okay.
Our favorite people these days.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it's really about the team that they have at CDM. They have different specialties, so there's a plural there, and then we've been working with a diff consultant to make sure that all the numbers are accurate, who has been working directly with the assessor. It's my understanding, that's pretty much the body of people we're working with at this time. CDM, who we've typically been working with, who the DPW has been working with, and they have various specialties within their team, so you probably would use plural in the word consultants, and then our diff consultant, who's pretty much wrapped up their work in making sure we're hitting the right targets and numbers.
I think the answer is that he's not just talking about the technical consultants for wastewater, but also people that they consult with respect to funding formulae and things like that.
For, for the diff, it was very specific. So other things we're working on, we're working on our own. Eventually, we'll probably work with a team on betterment as we get closer to the, so the building cycle. We've been able to address many of those issues internally.
I think you'll find out later, hopefully you'll find out later in the presentation, that there's a lot of different funding sources that are going to go into this, and they're consulting with different people and groups on different aspects of this, not only engineering and construction, but also funding measures.
So a lot of these so-called consultants are not on a retainer basis, is that, I mean, they're just as needed or something like that?
If I may, they're on a contract basis. So the diff consultant is just there until we finish the document, and we're pretty close to that. When we move to the betterment consultant, they'll be there until we finish that contract. So it is not on a retainer basis for either one of those, and CDM is, I'm sure, there are other people that can give more detail is there until we go through the process of design and as per their contracts we've already issued.
Thank you for your question, and I'll just also respond by just saying, I know that sometimes in government, you know, we hear the word consultants and think that it's a, it's a boondoggle. I, I will say that going back to my earlier comments about the importance of allowing department heads and leadership within the town to be able to specialize and manage all the work they have in front of us, there is only so far that we can go without having additional staff people on staff. And, you know, unless we want to hire a team of people who are dedicated 100% of the time to crunching the numbers on wastewater financing, or developing wastewater plans, or what have you, carry all of the overhead that goes along with that, making, outsourcing to consultants is, is the only fiscally prudent option besides that. So I think, in this case too, especially when we're going into something so important, such a big investment for the community, we need to get it right, and we need to work with people who, this is what they do all day.
You know, you could, you could add that Bill Scott alone has saved us more than his salary in consultants.
Don't talk like that, he'll want more money.
And we should probably give it to him.
It's a financial detriment. We should, no races. Okay, anybody else have a question or comment on this, the finance committee? Does anybody else want to comment on anything that was brought up?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, thanks. And I, and I too want to join with my colleagues in thanking you for all the time and energy that you put into this. Being on the finance committee's not an easy job, and so your, your work is appreciated. I, I do cringe when I hear that in Yarmouth, we've been kicking the can down the road. Maybe we haven't come to a resolution, but I'm not sure I'd call it kicking the can down the road. I think we've been trying, and that's, that's been the challenge. We've tried and failed, now we're trying again. And I think, the thing that I think is important to reflect on, is that we've actually been listening to the voters. We've been listening to the people in the community that have been telling us that maybe we shouldn't be paying for this on the backs of the taxpayer, that we should phase it, do more in getting outside support, and maybe finding a way to get the users to really pay more of a share in actually the financing of the project, particularly in the business community. And I think that's one of the things that's unique about the wastewater proposal that's before us, before us at this town meeting, is that roughly 80, 85% of the cost that's left after you deduct all the grants and all the funding, all the loans, all the 0% financing and all of the forgivable financing that ultimately turns out to be a grant, after you basically take out all the funding that we're going to get, the remaining portion, which is roughly 15% of the overall cost, all right, of that 15%, the vast majority of that cost will be pretty much borne by the business community, all right? Phase 1 largely focuses on 28 from one end to the other, and so this is vastly different than anything that the voters in Yarmouth have seen before. I think this is one of the most creatively designed projects, creatively financed, and I think what it does is it, it really focuses on a minimal burden to the average resident. So I think, yes, we did spend time exploring regional options with the other towns that we thought that could, well, if we had gone forward, if the other towns had wanted to go forward, we would have saved a substantial amount of additional money, but the reality is we couldn't wait any longer for the towns to figure out what they're going to do. The other thing that is, I think, really exciting about this proposal is that it keeps the door open for other regional partners, and anytime you keep the door open with other regional partners, you also have the opportunity to bring in other money and other resources, which is another strength for the project. So I think this, the town has done an incredibly, and I, and I would share your comments, that we've done a great job with our team, including our consultants, in crafting something that really makes the most sense for the people of Yarmouth. The reality is if we say no, if, if we, if we do what we did last time, we say no. Actually, what no means is, is actually, no, no will mean something different this time. No will mean that we're saying no to working together as a town to do something, but we will inadvertently be saying yes to each homeowner south of Route 6, having to install a $50,000 IA system that for many people won't solve the problem, all right? And if we want to talk about regulations that don't make sense, well, that's part of what we're talking about. But nonetheless, something's coming down the pike. And the reality is, is that if we do nothing, then individuals will be on their own, having to spend a significant amount of additional money to take on this problem themselves. So the reality is that financially, it's best that we come together as a community, work together, and support this Article, Article 18 at the town meeting, so that we can basically not only make a step forward, but basically save the residents of Yarmouth a huge financial burden that is coming at them. So that's what I think this is all about, and I really appreciate your comments, and, and I'm looking forward to working with the finance committee at town meeting and this board to help make the case to the people of Yarmouth that financially, the proposal that's before them is the strongest and most sound financial decision that they can make as individuals.
Dan?
Thank you.
Dorcas?
I'm also, just to reiterate again, great job, all the time that you've put into this, and you've put together an excellent presentation for us today, and hopefully the folks will be able to see it on Channel 18 later.
Or on YouTube.
Or YouTube, thank you very much.
Vita?
In addition to what Selectmen Forrest indicated, the new system, if it, if it were to be put in by the individuals, it also has annual maintenance, annual electricity costs, annual inspections, and the inspections, as of right now, are supposed to be done by the health department in the town. There are over 12,000 septic systems that would have to be inspected annually, which would mean that we would have to hire three, four, maybe five people just to do all those inspections. So again, Number 18 saves everybody a lot of money and a lot of headache. And again, a great job in your, in your, your comments as to what should be done to help follow and, you know, to get, get things apples to apples, very, very well taken, and they should very much be worked on. Also, your comment on rolling stock, I find that very important, because it's a very expensive item for the town. It should be very consistently thrown around and run. And again, thank you, thank you for all the work.
I too want to thank you for your, your work and your presentation here tonight, and the materials that you've provided us. I, you know, I pretty much am in accord with Mark's comments, so I won't go through them all, but the reality is, when you talk about kicking the can down the road, I, I think it goes to whether the glass is half empty or half full. If you look at this historically, yes, I think it has been kicked down the road, because there was a time, this could have been done with a lot of state money for cheap.
Federal money, too.
And, but to Mark's point, we in good faith tried to arrive at a regional solution with Dennis and Harwich, and had every reason to expect that we could come up with a, a regional plan. The cost of this septic facility itself wasn't where the savings was, it was in the ongoing operation and maintenance, which would have been millions of dollars for all of the participants. But as this got delayed or got bogged down, the cost, the estimated cost went from about $160 million to $207 million, and we just couldn't afford that kind of delay and that kind of project escalation any longer. So to Mark's point, there's a lot of creative financing, there's, there's a tremendous amount of work that's been done to keep this project off of the tax rolls and to put a cap on betterments to, to the residents that are concerned about, well, what's this going to cost me in the long run? And we're estimating, and these figures aren't, you know, I don't think you can get intractable figures. You can only, at this point, have a cost estimate, because we have never done anything like this before, but probably for a two or three-bedroom home over a 30-year period, about $15,000. Now, what's good about that is that once you're locked into a, a central collection system, that's all you're going to have to worry about, that $500 bill or $520 bill every year. Whereas if you have to do an innovative and alternative system, even the state can't give you numbers. They'll throw all kinds of crazy numbers out there, but they don't know, because what DEP wants you to do is when you replace it, to replace it with the most advanced available technology that's in existence at that time. And as you know, with technology, it constantly changes, it constantly gets better, and it constantly gets more expensive. In addition to that, once you do an INA system, that doesn't mean that, that system will last you forever. You may end up, you know, I don't know what the useful life of those systems are, but 20 years later, 30 years later, you might be putting another one in. but twenty years later, thirty years later, you might be putting another one in. At that time, for two or three times the cost of the first system. Whereas with the town, you're not going to have that concern. So nobody likes to spend this kind of money, let's be honest. But when you look at the alternatives, I, I don't think they're really, it, it makes much sense. If Murphy's Law is correct, when you need to replace your system is when you're going to be able to ill afford to do it. It's going to be the same time you need a roof, or the same time you need a furnace. And you're not going to be able to go out and get, we have another article that we're trying to get the betterment rate to be two percent. Now, I would borrow all the money I could get my hands on for thirty years, fifty years, a hundred years at two percent because I'm betting that that's a pretty good rate in the long term. And it's going to be well under the rate of inflation. So there's just so many positives that I see out there. And, and don't forget the overriding question, which is environmental integrity. This has got to be done. This is not an optional thing. It's either going to be done by a system that we have control over, that we have input into, that we have management over, or it's going to be done according to some oppressive regulations where everybody's on their own. And the townwide system is going to be more efficient than these, than these other piecemeal approaches to wastewater. So like Mark, we look forward to working with you folks at town meeting to try to bring these points of interest up to the voters so that they have really a clear understanding of what the alternatives are and what the most advantageous solution is for them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just a, a couple of things I just want to piggyback on based on your comments and, and other members. So you're absolutely right, the board is absolutely right in terms of the, the value to homeowners of Phase One, one thing we didn't mention in here, but having Phase One, the biggest cost is, is developing the plant. And so that, the, in terms of, you know, rate payers, you know, betterments, the, the people who are paying that in town are the business community. That is a huge savings. And again, I, I applaud everyone who's been involved in coming up with the financing to be able to make that work, as well as, you know, the visitors who come here and, you know, stay in, in short-term rentals and hotels and motels, which makes sense. Another point I just want to add again for the folks watching at home, that your point, Mr. Chairman, about you don't know if the system's going to last. Well, the other point is, what if we discover another pollutant, right? What if we have something besides the nitrogen that we need to clean up? PFAS, something else, right? Then you got to go in lot by lot, and you, as an individual homeowner, have to pay to clean up that on, onsite, as opposed to if we have the plant, then we can have the town address it on the back end and clean up whatever that is. So again, thinking about not only the upfront costs, but the long-term costs and the value of your property, this is the best approach. And certainly, you know, I'm sorry if my comments were taken as, as we as the town. I think the town Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee has been right there with you as far as, you know, we can't wait for other towns, so agreed that, you know, you have been listening. I just look at it as I'm, I'm forty years old, and I think for almost my entire life, Cape Codders have been talking about the wastewater problem that we have. And we had federal money available in the 1980s that we could have had almost a hundred percent of it paid for by someone other than the, the homeowners now, and now we've, we've waited. Well, so when I say we, I mean, we collectively as Cape Codders, you know, we have kind of stuck our heads in the sand. And, and we've ignored opportunities after opportunities to pay a, a minimal amount, and now it's ballooned. And if we wait longer, it costs more, but it's not only if we wait longer, it costs more. It's we can't wait longer because the state's saying, nope, this is the end of the line. This is the end of the road. So with that being said, I, I thank you all for your comments and all of your work with regards to the budget, the town administrator, and all of his department heads, and of course, Bill, who has just been working like mad on the budget, on the diff, on capital budget, which you're going to hear about shortly, along with our great Capital Budget Committee. So thank you, and as always, should you all have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
I think Vida has something else before.
Just a point of order. Is there anybody on Zoom who might want to come in?
I don't know. Do you see anybody up there, Bob? I don't, no hands raised. Thank you for reminding us of that, Vida, but we don't see anybody. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate all your work and your presentation.
Actually, one thing if I could just add, I completely forgot. But we have had a couple of transitions within the committee. And I just want to thank Nate Ladley, who recently has had to resign due to some family and health issues. He's, he's been fantastic, as well as some of our other committee members. We have a great committee, and we look forward to the appointments process in the spring, making sure that we have a, a few more members as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Capital Budget Committee Report and Overview. This will also be an opportunity for the public to ask questions or make comments if they wish, after the presentation is before us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you all. I want to start with introducing our committee again, just reminding you of our players. So I'm Judy Tarver, and I'm the chair this year. And I'm calling Sandy Fife my co-chair. We kind of have that same relationship that they described in the FinCom with. I'm, I'm kind of the big person, big picture person, and Sandy's.
Sure thing. Thank you for the reminder. Okay, so I tend to be the big picture person, and Sandy is into the weeds with the details. We also have our at-large members, Cindy, Lindsay Pietro, Kathy Hislop, and Kurt Sears. And we have representatives from both the Planning Board, that's Will Rubenstein, and the FinCom, George Perkins. And our guide on the side here, Bill Scott. And we've had consistent support from Pam and Mary Alice in the, in the main office all through our process. So we're very grateful to them. So we do have a PowerPoint for you today. And we're just going to go through this as part of the public hearing. So reminding you of the purpose of our presentation today is that we did hand off the document in December. And then the school information came in, and then we incorporated that and came to see you in February. And so now we're providing another overview of the document, and that was in your pack at the complete report and all the details of the projects that were submitted, part of the 400-plus pages for tonight. All right. So our role is that we are charged with reviewing all requests for capital items and making recommendations to the FinCom, to you, the board, and to town meeting. And the definition of a capital item is anything that typically has a minimum value of $10,000 or a useful life of over five years. So examples of capital items would include buildings, vehicles, computer equipment, roadway, sidewalks, waterways, and construction costs. The committee's recommendations take the form of a five-year capital improvement plan and a 10-year facility plan. And those serve as the town's planning documents. Each year, these items are budgeted for and are presented then to town meeting as the capital budget. The capital budget is separate from the town's operating budget. And the funds that are going toward recurring expenses, salaries, employee benefits, and office expenses should be in the budget. And we, this has been something we've talked to you about for a few years. And we're really making good progress in moving these items over to the operating budget. I might say that again because it was our current theme. Okay, so the process. We did use this cloud-based portal this year, and that was a new system for us. And it allowed entry rating and management of the projects by us and by the departments. They entered their information, their supporting documents, their bids, their photographs. All kinds of data can go in there. Then the town administrator reviewed the projects and sent the recommendations to the CBC via the portal. So we were able to see in there what Bob was recommending to us. So that was nice. The system facilitates more rapid movement of the process. And that means that we were able to see fall town meeting articles. Where in the past, we were kind of in a race with fall town meeting. We were just gearing up for annual town meeting, and then preparations for special town meeting in the fall were happening. But this year, because of, we were able to capture that activity. So now we can track everything that's submitted. And what's really nice is the system holds those things so that it's not just something that went to town meeting, it was voted on, and it's gone. It's, it's in there, and we can track it. So we used, where did that go? So we did a rating system, and, did we skip a slide there? No, okay. Okay. So this is our, our overall process. We, as individual members, can access what the departments entered, what was forwarded by the town administrator, and then we can provide our own rating and comments. And we can see each other's rating and comments. So if you didn't think of something, somebody else might have written down something, and you go, oh, yeah, maybe I should have considered that. We also continued our liaison's approach where we have committee members assigned to the various departments and divisions. And they go out, tour sites, listen, have individual meetings. And it's a good way to get background information. And also to, they, they give us information, but we're able to say to them, okay, be prepared to discuss your funding a little bit more detail than what you had. So it's, it's a nice preparation, then that makes the CBC meetings more efficient. And then we used this, our new rating system, and that was facilitated by the software. So we had two major criteria, and they were weighted, significance and readiness. And the significance was weighted at seventy percent, readiness at thirty. And there were very specific criteria which we presented to you when we were here in February. And we can mix and match scores for projects. So you don't have to rate the readiness high and the significance high. It could be very, very significant, but not ready at all. So that, that could, and these are the, the titles that the groups have. Essential, desirable, acceptable, and deferable. So we're going to show you the essential in detail. So an essential project would be described in these ways. The significance would be a very high priority, projects that are required, that we need to complete them. We need to renovate a major public improvement. There are projects that will remedy a condition dangerous to health, safety, and welfare of the public, PFAS. Or projects which will provide facilities for a critically needed community program there, or that are in response to state or federal mandate, and that have available other sources of funding which will not be available at a future date. So that's kind of a pressure. If there's money available now, let's go for it. And then the readiness of the project itself, is it clearly described? Are there plans? Are there studies? Cost estimates? Other detailed documentation that shows us that this project is ready to go and that we can schedule it into the plan? The project is an integral part of a larger, long-range program, not something that just popped up. And how it relates to other projects, how things are coordinated, how they're prioritized, how they relate to the town goals. So that's just an example, and then there, those things exist for the other three categories as well. So here we have that big picture of funding sources over ten years. So you can see the sources of funding. And we're actually talking about the second column fiscal year 2024. And what we just kind of want to capture here is that those first couple of columns are very well populated. And then as we go out, sometimes we don't know as much in those out years. But that's one of the reasons that we want to have good plans so that we can start to populate those columns. So now this is actually that same chart, only just the first five years. So you can see them a little bit better. And you can also see that this is much more populated. We know much more about what's going on in the next five years. We also can see our big, oops. Yeah, here we are. You know, where our big-ticket items are down in wastewater, Water Enterprise. Those are big-ticket items. And then this, this is the last five years. And you've seen this slide before. So this is looking at funding sources, so you see the dollar amounts, and then all the various funding sources that we have. And you see that big pillar down there under wastewater, which is that beautiful program that we've just, you've just spent so much time talking about, and why it's so complicated, and there it is so large. And then when we go to the next slide, we take that out so we can see what's going on in the rest of the town budget. And again, Water Enterprise, and water being our important resource. So there's a lot of energy there. So what we want to do here is talk about spreading out the projects by showing the project stages from engineering to the final construction. We really are trying to encourage looking at the ten years going out. And again, rolling stock, we should see rolling stock in all ten years that's based on a replacement plan. This is really coming into play nicely the last couple of years. We folded in a couple of leasing programs for police cruisers and using leases for other rolling stock within the town. So this is helping to populate that going out the ten years because we know what those ten-year leases are. We're saying, okay, if we spread this cost out, it's anticipated, there it is, rather than looking at vehicles that are coming up here and there. So we'd like to see a design and preliminary plans for buildings rather than the general HVAC repair account for emergencies. And I think Bob took care of that, right? So the HVAC account was moved over. It's in the budget? Right, okay. Where we were getting that under capital. And it's, it's ongoing, it's unpredictable, it doesn't have clear projects assigned to it. So it needed to be someplace else. Here we have our present year, the year we're talking about, 2024, in the center. And we're looking at the capital improvement program list by funds. Smaller version, we've just looked at it. We've just looked at it for 10 and 5. So this is just comparing. So this is a real snapshot. Say that again? Oh, oh, yeah. Just a reminder that the items that we addressed at special town meeting in the fall are actually in 2023 fiscal year. So even though we've just seen them, they, they show up there. So kicking off from that, from special town meeting, what our experience this fall showed us what, that the information that we have now is far more comprehensive. And it's overall of a really much higher quality, what's coming to us. We can really see what's going on. The information includes project schedules, it includes plans for funding. You heard from FinCom that they had a kind of a new set of questions that they wanted to ask every department. And that was true for us as well. You know, we really kind of came down very, very clearly that we want to know what are your plans for funding things? And have you looked outside? So we had our little questions that needed to be addressed as well, and we got the information. The system also provides improved communication and documentation. So the documentation is there, you can see it, we can see it. Things are supported. And what I thought was really important was that it demonstrates the continuity of the projects over time. So we don't have projects popping up because this was available, or this piece of equipment maybe seemed necessary because we had a lot of tree damage. But now we see requests coming in as part of a longer plan and fitting into our overall service that we need to provide. That was, that was a very, very nice outcome of what we did this year. So we're continuing to clarify the projects which are addressed in our work with the desired result of further refining the town's CIP. I think you saw in this year's CIP, a different flavor to it and different, different level of detail. Not to say better, worse, but it was definitely a different level of detail. And it's moving toward being a pure capital project. Again, our thanks to everybody at the town. All the department and division heads were very generous with their time with us, sharing information, answering questions, and people at town hall as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we didn't have many or any word questions the first time around, I'm going to go to the public this time first. Does anybody in the public have questions or comments? Chris Greeley?
Chris Greeley, it wouldn't be a meeting without my saying something. I have to tell you how impressed I am tonight with the incredible amount of work that clearly has taken place on the part of town personnel and volunteers in this community. This is really extraordinary. I mean, I've been here since 1981. I've been a pretty active town meeting member and try to come to all these meetings and sit through things. And it is so clearly evident when you use the words in there, higher quality. This really has taken place. I just felt I needed to mention that. This is an extraordinary set of presentations tonight, and I think is really going to be very, very helpful with some of the very complex and very costly decisions that we have to make as citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
On the Article 16 about the free cash, number items 21 and 22 refer to the senior center. And in the past, we have had renovations for the senior center, have been there, but then they disappear off the warrant before we go to town meeting. So I'm wondering, are these going to still be on the warrant? Can we vote on this at town meeting?
Does anybody have a response to that?
They are on the warrant in the general article for all those CIP items, is my understanding.
They are, and are they going to stay on there?
We're with you. We're, we're definitely with you. The process is that by, I, I think next week, March 28th, the Board of Selectmen will be taking their final recommendations on the town meeting warrant. At that time, it will be published. And we have heard nothing but the complete support. In fact, the Board of Selectmen, I, I think have tasked us to ensure that those items related to the senior center be on the warrant. So we followed the direction of the board.
Okay, and everyone realizes this meeting is being taped. Thank you.
Well aware of that. And you should also know that you're on the tape as well. No, we, that's, that's a priority item. I, I, I don't think you have anything to be concerned about there. Anyone else?
No hands are up online.
We have some people online?
No, no.
We don't? Okay. Anyone in the audience? No? How about board members? Mark?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank the previous speaker for taking my question and getting an answer. As you might recall, we spent an inordinate amount of time at our last meeting talking about the senior center. So I appreciate the fact that we don't have to bring that up again tonight, so. I too want to echo the comments of Ms. Greeley about the, the capital improvement program and the way, and the detail and the thoroughness and the way in which it's been organized. I would have to say this is probably the best document and the best program that I have seen in all my years working and serving in the town of Yarmouth. It's an incredibly impressive program. I also have to give kudos to our finance team. And I know earlier tonight, there were some kudos to Mr. Santio. The fact that we, it's great to have a program, and it's great to have it well organized and well thought out. But it's also great to have some money to be able to work with. And the reality is that over the years, Yarmouth has really pinched pennies. And now we're seeing the fruits of a tremendous amount of work by our team in the town administrator's office, but also our finance team as well. Together, this effort has now resulted in a program that is incredibly well thought out, but also one that we can now start to finance. And I'll tell you, it is such a relief to see us be able to actually finance things that we need to do. And, because as you know, for so long, we, the needs were growing, but our ability to finance them seemed to stay stagnant. Or sometimes we'd be going, financially, we'd have to tighten the belts even further. And I'm not suggesting that we're not tightening our belts financially, it's just that we've made some very prudent decisions about how we manage our finances so that we can invest resources into this program. So once again, thank you so much for all of your hard work. And it's a great team, you folks and Bill. I noticed that this document has a few more words in it, a little bit more verbiage in it than the prior documents. I know Mr. Scott had something to do with that. But again, it's well, it's, it's well-written, it's very, very thoughtful, it's very comprehensive.
Good thing you didn't have any input, it'd be an encyclopedia.
There you go. Okay. All right, I'm done, I'm done. All right, I'll stop right there.
No, I'm good. I always appreciate the amazing work that you people are doing, especially this latest iteration. Thank you. This is a real tool for us to go forward, and it couldn't be more timely. With this Wastewater project, having this kind of detail and this kind of planning tool is just imperative, and you've given it to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Darkus?
I think with this presentation, you certainly left no questions. I mean, I, I love, in fact, the, down to the detail of the pictures of each of the items, it's superb.
And, and those are provided by the departments, so they're, that's what they're uploading. So it's a lot of participation across the town, not, not just our committee by any means.
I think that people could say that they really can see very clearly what the capital budget is this year and understand what the capital budget is this year. Excellent job. And you've really, your work has really paid off. And thank you, Bill. I know you played a big part in this too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darkus. Peter?
Again, I'd like to thank everybody, especially in the fact that you've defined capital projects, which is extremely important. It makes it very easy for, for people on the board and people in the public to understand. And also the rating system also makes it quite, quite easy to figure out why you're doing this, what's important and what can be deferred. A great document. And I know at previous town meetings, there's been some ranting and raving as this is not really a capital budget project. Why is it here? Now that it's nicely defined, we will keep those things that really are not capital budget projects out of this. And, and they'll be in, into the budget and not thrown into an HVAC whatever. Again, thank you very much. Very good project.
Thank you, Peter. I would just like to thank you as well for all your work. And this is a much improved document over what we've been dealing with in the past. It does reflect all the time and the hard work behind it. And it's very systematic document. And it's a good guide. It's a good guide for anyone who's interested in the capital budget, even, even the committee itself. It's like a blueprint, really. It has that, it has that quality. And there's a lot of discipline, I think, behind this document. And there's specific criteria for evaluating needs of the town and what's going to get done now and what's going to have to wait. So it's very systematic, very well thought through, and much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to have a remote presentation on the technical?
Yes, we're going to have a remote presentation. We'd like to have all of our folks on the meeting promoted to panelists. And I'll try to assist with some of the slides. If the presenters can indicate when they want their slides advanced, we're going to have the presentation up on the big screen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you please indicate when you're ready for me to start? And thank you very much for your, for your help, Bob. Thank you very much. And I cannot see the presentation, so I will have you advance the slides and hopefully we'll stay on the same page. Perfect, wonderful. My name is Erin Orcut, and I am the Business Administrator for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. Thank you for having me here tonight. I do appreciate the opportunity to present our budget to you. Mr. Samborn sends his regrets, but I am here on his behalf. I want to start by thanking the members of our finance committee who really were integral in working with administration, specifically Mr. Samborn and myself, to develop this budget. Our finance subcommittee members are our chairman, Mr. Tulio, Mr. Bloomfield from Yarmouth, Dr. Michaud, and Stefan Galazzi of Orleans. Next slide, please. This is a quick snapshot of where our enrollment is this year in comparison to last year. As you can see, we have a total enrollment in FY '24 of 664 students. That number is up 11 students over last school year. And you will note, Yarmouth has increased by one student this school year. So your enrollment has gone up by one student. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is just a quick demonstration of where the students from our district come from. As you know, our district is a 12-town regional district, where our largest two ascending towns are Barnstable and followed by Yarmouth. Yarmouth is contributing to 22.4% of our overall enrollment this year. Next slide. Again, I just want to show you some history of where our enrollment has been. It's easy to see that we are definitely on the incline as far as enrollment. In FY '20, we had hit a low of 570 students. Luckily, we have been climbing up since then, in the high right now of 664, which enrollment-wise is a really comfortable number to be at. The building was originally built for 650 students. As you may know, that figure is 85% capacity. So we can go higher than 650. And what, where we are really is a good fit for the building balancing our vocational and academic studies. Next slide, please. The budget that I am presenting to you in the town of Yarmouth is a 3.86% overall increase of the operating budget over FY '23. That ended, that is reflective of a $623,000 increase for a total operating budget of The six-year history on the right-hand side, you can see that we have, I, I believe, been good stewards of taxpayer money. We have tried to keep our increases under 2%, with that one exception of FY '21. Again, we did try to stay under 3% this year, but many, many cost drivers have had to inflate our budget to 3.86%. Next slide, please. So where does the money come from? We have three major revenue sources that fund our regional school budget. I would say the least contributor is local revenue. The $665,000 that we are dedicating from local revenue is mostly derived from our excess and deficiency funds. We are dedicating $600,000 from our excess and deficiency fund, which you probably know better as a free cash, where we will use that as a revenue offset. In addition to that, we are contributing $65,000 in rental revenue. We have two strong relationships where we rent portions of our property. One is the YMCA of Cape Cod, which, if you do not know, they are working to renovate a building on our property. And we are renting that building so that they can educate 47 infant toddlers and preschool students there in that building, providing another childcare option for, for folks in that, in that area of, of the Cape. The other is with Cape Destinations, our boss and company. State aid is contributing three, roughly $3.6 million to this budget. This is a significant uptick over last year. The Student Opportunity Act definitely infused our budget with more state aid than we had seen. And that is why the assessment number, although it is up slightly, has been significantly offset by the state aid rising. The next slide really just shows you a graphical picture of where our budget is versus the sources of revenue that fund it. It's easy to see the operating budget, the blue line. As it ticks up, typically in the past, assessments have, have gone right up along with it. But you will see again, because the infusion of the state aid or the increase of the state aid, state aid is up and assessments thankfully are down slightly. Next slide. Again, the same information, just giving you a historical description of where our budget has been. And as you can see, this year, we are coming in with a $16,750,000 operating budget. Next slide, please. So what do we use the money for? It's easy to see that about 80% of the overall budget ends up being spent on salaries and benefits for the folks that work there. Having to maintain our own building that occupies about 9% of our budget, leaving very, very little that goes to consumables and support services for the students. But again, we bus, we budget very conservatively, fiscally conscious, and, and, and try to, try to be conservative with our spending. Next slide, please. Again, this is the same information I just shared with you, but in a numerical fashion. It's easy to see that insurance benefits are a major cost driver of the budget, 11.4%. Healthcare is always a major issue. So we work really hard, Bob and I work really hard, I think, as members of the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group to board to, to, I'm sorry, and David as well, Davidson, to be able to make very important decisions that affect, that are affect our employees, that are major, major costs on us of our budget. Going to the next slide, I wanted to share with you where we are in our capital debt schedule. We are in year five of a 20-year fixed principal declining interest bond. We had a very favorable interest rate, and I'm very happy that the finance people in your, in your town, as well as the other towns, really got together and encouraged us to be aggressive and go for that 20-year note, because I'm happy to say that we are a quarter of the way through the process of driving down that debt. You will see that in FY '24, that number is 5.9 million. Next slide. And what that looks like for the town of Yarmouth is a capital assessment for FY '24 in the amount of $1,325,533. And again, that number is based purely upon your enrollment of 149 students. Next slide, please. And this is our total assessments. As you can see, our operating budget would be an assessment to the town of Yarmouth in the amount of $2,724,141. Adding that debt that I had just previously said, will bring a total assessment for debt and operating of $4,49,674. Next slide. I wanted to close by sharing something that Cape Cod Tech is very happy with a collaboration that we have been a part of since 2015. We are part of the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. We benefit from the ability of, of pooling our, pooling our capital with the capital of this multi-employer trust. Currently, we are, we have, as of this report, it's about 2 million. Currently, we're at about $2.3 million in funding in our OPEB reserve. Our position is 13.38% funding to liability, which we've been told is very, very positive. We are continuing to fund this each year. We're, I believe, in year six of our OPEB funding schedule, where we are continuing to dedicate, hopefully, we want to reach a $300,000 a year threshold, keep that, and then eventually take advantage of the sun setting of the Barnstable Accounting Retirement Association assessment and be able to use that to further fund this liability. So again, just something we like to share about our, our, our efforts to try to fund this, this future liability. That is the end of my formal remarks. I am looking forward to answering your questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Chris Greeley.
I'm Christine Greeley, and as you know, I am one of the school committee members for the Cape Cod Tech. Norm unfortunately had a significant meeting that he had conflict tonight, otherwise he would be here, and he's been very important in terms of being on the finance committee as a retired superintendent. He's offered, I think, a great deal of help. I simply need to commend Erin and our soon-to-be Dr. Samborn, Bob, for the efforts and the work they're doing. As you know, I'm a retired school administrator, and I used to have the responsibility for zero basing 11, $11 million portion of the school budget for my department. And this work that is done by Erin and by the team at Tech has been incredible, and it probably comes closest to zero-based budgeting that you're going to see anywhere. And the work that they do during the year with every single individual working in the school, every department, and coming forward to try to come through with this budget looking like it does. And I think it's very reflective that for a number of years here now, we've come in below 2%. And so that the whole issues at this point have to do with enrollment, which are going to continue to influence that. But I will tell you that this budget is not one that's developed on, oh, we got so much last year, let's just add a percentage on to this year's. It's actually done by a principle in which, what are we spending? What are we needed for? Are you true, is this truly what we need? And all I can do is commend the work that is done for that, because I think it's really being done for every single one of us as taxpayers in this community. And in the meantime, our kids are getting an incredible, incredible educational experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? I'll go to the board then, Mark.
I don't have any comments. Just thank you for the, once again, outstanding budget presentation and for all your really hard work in coming to us with a pretty bare bones budget. So thank you.
Erin, just a quick question. You mentioned you're working with the Y, with the preschool program. Is there any thought for the school to reopen the preschool program that you used to have years ago when you would teach preschool teachers?
The short answer would be no. I don't believe with our school age population that we would pursue that again. We went through an extensive, as you know, we went through an extensive process of evaluating these shops and decided to, to cut down our shops by two in order to build a more compact building, something a little bit cheaper, but also be able to meet workforce, the needs of where the students want to go. That being said, I do believe this opportunity for training during, through our community school, we have a very robust community school, offering numerous programs. And I believe that we could probably help with some kind of a training program, but really just, our contribution is just, I guess, providing a revenue source to, to the taxpayers or for our budget and having them on our, in our facility.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation.
On, on your budget, you have provision for contract negotiations and a figure of $294,954 for FY '24. Is that because you're going through contract renewal in that year?
Yes, we are, we are currently on contract negotiations with all of our union and non-union employees. So we hope to be settled in the next month or so.
Okay, that was my next question. So it's all of the, all of the unions?
Everyone.
All of the unions, okay. And how long would the contract be for? Is that known at this time?
It is a one-year contract.
One-year contract, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorcas. Peter?
I want to thank the Tech School for providing a good education and providing a good education for people living on the Cape and make a good living once, once they graduate. And it, it's a, it's a good bare bones budget and very well done and very well presented. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with Peter's comments, and thank you very much for the presentation. The information is very clearly and logically laid out, easy to follow. And as usual, your, your budget is, is reasonable and defensible. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to the taxpayers, thank you to the board, thank you to the administration. Have a, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District budget presentation. We have Superintendent Woodbury live. And we're going to hear from DY next. Yeah, adjust that any way you want, you know. I don't, I can't, I don't hear that that's working, is it?
It might be working now. How's that?
Bring it a little closer to you and try to speak into it.
All right.
And adjust it any way that it works for you.
Okay, thanks very much. So before we get started with our budget presentation, you'll see the newest school in town up on the screen. We're very excited about that, but I want to extend an invitation to all of you and to the community members to come to the ribbon cutting. It'll be on Saturday, May 6th at 10:30 in the morning, and we'd love to have you there. And we're going to put out a little bit more information about that, about speakers, et cetera, coming soon. But we had to make sure that most everything would be complete, and we're happy and excited to see that a lot of it will be done by then. So we would love to have you all come and enjoy a day with us, because it's pretty darn exciting. So now I'll turn it over to Dave Flynn, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Finance.
Good evening, thanks. I apologize, this is the exact same presentation we did for our school committee a couple weeks ago, that's why the date said March 6th on the bottom and highlighted there as well. So when we started off, you know, a large portion of our increase each year comes from Chapter 70, the state funding. And when we were developing the budget, the second part of that is what are the assessments to the towns relied heavily upon this. So this was intending to show that, you know, we rely a lot on the governor's proposal in the budget in Chapter 70. The left-hand side is the revenue that comes directly to the schools, Chapter 70, charter school aid, transportation aid, school choice. Those represent $14.5 million in revenue. Then we also have assessments, just like the towns do, that comes straight off of our revenue for charter school assessment, school choice, special education assessment, part of school choice of 5.2 million. So I just point those out, because those are two very large numbers, which are variables until the governor's budget was released on March 1st. So I couldn't have given the town a preliminary assessment prediction until that came out. So we can go through the foundation enrollment over the years. So with our regional agreement, the costs above the minimum set by the state, and based on the five-year average of the previous five years, those are the five rows shaded in gray. So for the years 2019 through 2023, Yarmouth has a five-year average of 68.606% and Dennis' is 31.394. And if you looked, it's been creeping up a little bit each year as the students shift a little bit, you know. Back in 2016, for that singular year, it was 64%. The numbers in this year are 69%. So there's been a little bit of shift over each of the years, and I actually have, since it's in the year in arrears, I already know what next year's split is going to be, and it's going to be 69.091% for Yarmouth. So it's going to go up another four tenths of a percent on the split again next year. And again, it's all driven by the five-year average of the enrollment between the two towns. So here it is a little bit more detail, the numbers that I was just showing and alluding to in the first slide, our state aid Chapter 70 money, up $1.6 million. Regional transportation up a little bit. Charter school reimbursement up only $5,000. School choice tuition up about $30,000. So for a net increase in the revenue of about $1.7 million, again largely driven by the increase in Chapter 70. Our charges, special education portion of school choice down a little bit, school choice in and of itself down a little bit, charter school tuition up 100,000, 200,000 or so, I guess, actually. What I think is a good point on here is showing that our school choice tuition estimates are down. That's telling me that's roughly 30 students at $5,000 a student that are coming back in district. I don't think they've gone away. The overall enrollment is actually slightly up. So that tells me with that difference in school choice sending tuition going down, that approximately 30 students are now retained in our own schools. And I do think, getting back to the picture of the new school that's open, that enrollment compared to what the Matices and Wixen separate enrollments were just a year ago is up. So I think that school is a drawer in retaining students who, say, after grade three, may have chosen to go somewhere else, they're now staying here with us. And we'll see if that trend continues, but at least in this current year, that's where I see the bump in our overall enrollment. Oops, I'm sorry. And I believe it ties to the decrease in the school choice sending number of students. So you net those two against each other, state aid revenue, state aid assessments, the school choice, gives us our net amount of state aid. So our net increase in revenue to the district is $1,622,810. Now, when we look at the past five-year history, DY was seeing a decline. So in FY '20, it was 5.6 million, it dipped to 5.2, it dipped to 5 million in FY '22. Then we see this large increase in FY '23 and another $1.6 million increase in FY '24. That is all driven by, and you heard Erin mention it, the Student Opportunity Act, in the state targeting low-income, high-needs and special-needs student subgroups and giving us additional funding in the formula to target the services that those children and families need. So that is directly is what's tied to the increase in FY '23 and FY '24. We're currently in year, well, FY '24 will be year three of a six-year implementation. So hoping to see a similar increase for at least the next three years beyond this year. So when we look at the Chapter 70 aid, you can see the foundation enrollment in total is up 19 students. The foundation budget as calculated by the state is up $4.1 million. So it's much more complicated than this, but to start off, there's the required district contributions from both towns. So Dennis is required for next year, 12.5 million. Yarmouth required 25.5 million. And then in a nutshell, what's the difference between the required increase in the foundation budget and the required district contributions? That leaves 1.6 million remaining. So the state backfills the difference with the $1,610,000. So when I talk about the state and the Student Opportunity Act targeting subgroups and putting additional funding into that formula, the two rows I have down the bottom that are in red are economically disadvantaged students, 56.1%, and a high-need student is a student that falls in any one of those categories above, which is a first language that's not English, English-language learner, students with disabilities. So at 66.4%, you can see two-thirds of our entire student population falls into one of those categories. So we are a high-needs district with our population. But the upside of that is the additional funding that we're receiving from the state. There are 12 levels of high needs that the state categorizes each town or school district into, with group one being the lowest amount of high needs, group 12 being the highest amount of high needs. We are in group 10 at 62.91% overall high needs. So out of, again, 12 groupings of high needs, we're 10 out of 12. As you can see, I'm sorry, my point on the bottom. In group 10, for each student that categorized as high needs, in the Chapter 70 formula, it adds $6,579.86 to the foundation budget. So again, that's what's driving our increase in state aid that we've seen over the past two years, is that targeted amount down the bottom times the headcount of the students that fall into those categories, as addition to the base foundation budget. So what's the school district's priorities for next year? Well, we're coming into this wanting to maintain a level service budget. Now, by being level service, we want to retain all of our current staffing and then address contractual increases. So special needs tuition and services, transportation for regular day and special needs, health insurance, those rates to be set in February, which they were, property and liability insurance, facilities, grounds, utilities, and retirement and Medicare tax. So the chart is kind of small, I apologize. That's basically our FTEs of employees by building and by employee type. We have 563 employees, FTE employees. So to retain our entire current staffing for next year would be $1,883,098. Tuition and services for special needs. Now, you may have heard that the state OSD, Occupational Services Division, they have the arm of the state which sets the approved tuition rates for private school out-of-district tuition placements. Well, the state has historically approved an increase of 2% to 3% per year over the past 15, 18 years. Well, going into '24, the state has approved a 14- past 15, 18 years. Well, going into '24, the state has approved a 14% increase in those programs. The Department of Ed wasn't happy about that, but they said that's what was voted by the OSD. Those are the rates that are going through. These private schools really politic for, you know, retaining their own staff, their own costs going up, the cost of everything going up. They needed an increase to keep their programs running, and the OSD allowed it. So all of our students in private school out-of-district placements, those tuitions are going up by 14% next year. So we need to account for that. There's been talk about Governor Healy's budget. Those are supplemental budget. Is it going to address this? How is it going to address this? There's been money put aside, but what has not come out yet is how do we apply for it? How and when will we receive it? There's the Circuit Breaker Fund, which is for helping to offset high cost of special ed placements, but that's a year in arrears. You incur the expense in one year. We file a claim. You receive a reimbursement in the following year. So if this works the same way, we wouldn't see any relief until '25 for the increased costs in '24. Again, the state just this morning was an email that they're not positive how it's gonna work yet. So that being said, within the budget, we know the cost is going to be there. So within our special ed programs, that translates into $416,500 projected increase for next year. Tuition to charter schools and school choice is an increase of only $32,000. The current year that we're in now, it was actually an increase of $438,000 from the year prior. So I was actually happy to see that it's only going up $32,000 next year. Transportation for regular day and special needs. So our regular day contract, which was a five-year bus contract, is up this June 30th. We're currently out to bid right now. We'll be receiving the bids back on April 3rd, I believe it is. So given the cost of diesel, the cost of drivers, the cost of everything, it's, I've been talking to other districts that have gone out to bid within the past couple of months, everybody is seeing unfortunately a sizable increase in the lowest bids that are coming in for transportation. And then with the special needs transportation, we have an increased number of places that the vehicles need to go to outside of the bounds of our own district. Where we can, primarily if it's on Cape Cod, we use the Cape Cod Collaborative. They have a large fleet of transportation. But especially if the service is off Cape, they can't get the students there for us. Then we need to find a private contractor who's willing to come to Dennis and Yarmouth, pick the student up, drive them to wherever their placement is, go back in the afternoon, pick them up, bring them back home to Dennis and Yarmouth. The cost of that on a daily basis is through the roof, depending on where the placement needs to go and where the company is coming from that has the capacity to add you into their fleet of vehicles. So when you put those two together, we're expecting transportation to increase by $485,000 next year. Health insurance, just like, you know, we're part of the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, as is the town. Bob and I are both on the committee, so you probably already know the rates are going up 4% for next year. They'd originally said to expect an increase up to 8%, but when we voted in February, it was voted at 4%. So that represents, well, along with the property and liability insurance increasing approximately 10%, you put the 4% on health insurance, 10% on property and liability, $351,800. Maintenance and utilities, we outsource our custodians in the schools. That contract is also up this June 30th. Trash removal contract, electricity and natural gas prices increasing. And there's a solar field next to the Wixon School, which is on town of Dennis property, helped to offset the cost of electricity at the Wixon Building to the tune of about $50,000 a year. But to be quite honest, we're being told by the town of Dennis that since it's on Dennis property and the school's being turned back to them, they want to keep the solar field generating credits to a building within the town of Dennis and not letting the credits follow us to the new school. So I needed to add $50,000 to the electric utility line within the budget to offset the loss of those credits when I, you know, essentially transferred the service from Wixon to the new school. The solar credits are staying with the old building, not following us to the new building. So you add all those together, it's $315,700. Retired and Medicare, only a nominal increase of $22,000. The district has four pieces of debt that are outstanding. The bond from the high school issued in 2005, the final payment will be 2026. These are the total payments, not just the Yarmouth, our total principal and interest on that's $453,000. The Ezra Baker Bond, which is paid just by Dennis, $238,000. The first bond on the new DY Intermediate Middle School issued in 2021, going out 30 years through 2053, is a payment of $2,190,919. Then we also did a one-year ban, which will be interest-only, due in 2024, of $979,284. This chart's a little small, but it's our budget broken up by the Department of Ed Function Codes, as voted on by the School Committee, Administration, Instruction, Pupil Services, for the prior year's actual, this year's budget, and next year's request. I had highlighted those two rows in green previously, because those were budget figures that I had, for my first prediction to the school committee, I was able to lower once the actual rates came out, the one being benefits and fixed charges. Once the health insurance rates were set at 4%, I lowered that figure to reflect only the 4%. The other one in green was when I was waiting for the governor's budget to come out, and the estimated amount for school choice and charter school tuition came in lower than I expected, so I was able to lower that figure as well. So I heard a figure before that stated that our increase was 6.1%. It's actually 5.1% in the operating budget, 5.11%. And you added, so an operating budget of $72,157,630. A debt service, those four pieces from the prior slide, are $3,861,878. For a total budget of $76 million, that's $19,508. This is kind of shows that graphically, those same Department of Ed Function Codes is how the budget is broken down. You can see over 50% is direct instruction. Then following clockwise around, pupil services, transportation, operations, and maintenance. Benefits and fixed charges, the green is quite a big pie. And then tuition to other schools, 12%, the next largest piece of pie. Administration, 3%. This is our just average per pupil expenditure. FY21 is the latest that the Department of Revenue, not the Department of Education, has published. You see we're the third lowest on Cape Cod, but right in there with Bourne, DY, and Montmoreau are fairly close. Bourne's supposed to be the lowest, and NOS, it's the highest on the Cape. So now, once we have the budget approved by the school committee, we have the revenue coming in from the state. We can get into how do we calculate the assessments for the two towns. So we start, you know, the proposed budget, $76,019,508 in the top left. You take out the debt, it's $72,157,630. From there, we subtract out the state aid and local revenue that comes straight to us, leaves an assessment of $57,493,930. From there, the first step is to put in the required minimum local contribution as set by the Department of Ed. We'll stick on the Yarmouth side, $25,546,149. And then row five, that's the row that gets apportioned by the percentages at the top, which is the five-year rolling average of foundation enrollments. So the remaining amount to be assessed above the minimum set by the state is $19,389. Times the 68.606% for Yarmouth is $13,302,235. For a total assessment of 30, operating assessment, $38,848,384. You follow that forward, add in the debt service, which is apportioned to Yarmouth, which is $2,336,804, leaves a total assessment of $41,185,188. And then just to show how we get back to the total budget that it balances, you add back in the state and local revenue of the $10,060,000. That's for reference only, portioning out between Dennis and Yarmouth. Brings you to the grand total, the bottom right box of the $76,019,508. So what does that look like as an increase in the operating assessments? So on the Yarmouth side, it's going up $979,219, which is just a hair over 2.5% at 2.586%. And then again, take the operating assessment plus the debt, the total assessment, $41,188. And this was just the motion that the school committee made on the budget. I would like to point out that I looked at your draft warrant articles online, and I did see that you had the total in there, the $41,185,188, but the numbers of the $38,848,384, I believe, was incorrect. The math did not add across when I looked at it. So I don't know if that just needs to be updated. Like I said, you had the correct total, it's just a two. That one number was off.
The 38,815,894 is actually 38,848,384.
Okay. Yeah, because I did notice the total matched our voted amount. Very appreciative to see that at least the recommendation matches the school committee's vote, and we were happy to come in at, although it ticked over 2.5%, right around that ideal target amount of 2.5, I believe. And that was the last slides.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Vida?
Vida Morris, could you break out the two or three components of the Chapter 70 formula that contributed the most to producing the kind of result that occurred? I guess I'm driving, we're so used in Yarmouth to be the ones who are having a major, major increase, you know, and now it's kind of flip-flop. So I'm kind of curious, you know, which of the components of that formula contributed the most?
So contributed the most to the Yarmouth assessment on a percentage basis being 2.5%? Is that the question?
Yep. Well, no, I mean, for both of them. I mean, to arrive at that, the 2.58 for Yarmouth and the 3.5 something for Dennis?
So the two, you asked about Chapter 70 in the beginning. So the largest driver in the increase in Chapter 70 is that targeted amount towards, through the Student Opportunity Act, our high-needs students.
Excuse me, could you speak to the microphone instead of keeping turning back to her?
I'm sorry, I'm trying.
When you do that, it affects the volume.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, look at her, look at us.
Okay, no problem.
Just a minute. That's not what I was driving at. Remember, you said that there are these components such as real estate assessments or valuations and income and that kind of thing in each town that ends up in that Chapter 70 formula.
Okay, so what she, I believe what she's referring to is the components that drive the minimum local requirement, which then feeds into the overall assessment. So the minimum local requirement set by the state is driven by every single city and town's relative ability to pay, based on a consistent formula that the Department of Ed applies to every single community. They take a percentage of your real estate values plus a percentage of the income of your residents, and say, here's your theoretical amount that you can afford to pay. So with Dennis, property-wise, being one of the most wealthy, we use that term relative on the Cape, with, you know, several hundred million dollars more property value than the town of Yarmouth, that drives a formula where they say, you know, Dennis, in theory, given your property values, you can afford more relative to the number of students that come from that town. So that drives their, you know, probably to the tune of about $400,000 shift towards them versus Yarmouth based on the relative wealth of the two towns. So that's the single largest driver.
That was the sample.
That's a, I might comment too. That's a very, very complex formula. When we had the various committees that were involved with the new school, we actually hired an expert. The two towns shared the fee for an expert to come in to explain your question. It's extremely complicated. And, but it is a statewide systematic evaluation of property values and income.
Correct.
Because I remember in the discussions, if it weren't for the income component, I think Dennis actually has higher property values than Yarmouth does. And so I remember all those machinations, and we, it was like 25 or 3,500 bucks a town split to have this expert come in and explain it. It is an incredibly complex formula. But that number, schools have to spend that money on education, that number. And then the rest of it, over and above that foundation number, is governed by the regional school district agreement.
Exactly. That was the point I was trying to make on the slide with Jess, but just the remaining 15 million or so.
The foundation enrollment number, it's, it has nothing to do with the negotiation back and forth with Dennis and Yarmouth. It's a state-mandated contribution.
All right, so the, the.
But it's very, I'm telling you, it is very, very complicated. Somewhere I have a file on it, and if I can ever find it, and you've got two weeks to spare, I'll sit down with you and go over it.
But last night, Mr. Flynn actually broke out some of those components, and I just couldn't, you know, keep up with it on the, but I remember that definitely the real estate values and maybe the income also to a certain extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Vida. Anyone else? Okay, I'll go to our board members. Mark. Oh, who do we have?
I think Joe Glenn's got his hand up.
Joe, are you on?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Would you like to be recognized?
I would.
Okay, you are recognized.
Okay, Joe Glenn from the school committee representing Yarmouth, but I just wanted to dovetail from what you were just saying about it being so complicated, but also to compliment Mr. Flynn. I've been watching, like you and many members of the community, the finances of the two towns and the machinations of the school committee and the finances. And I can tell you that David makes you, explains it better than anyone. I feel like I understand it now, even as complicated as it is. So it's just big kudos. And I've been watching it, and I've been hearing other people explain it for, for as long as Superintendent Woodbury's been there, which, by the way, if you don't know, you might want to compliment Mrs. Woodbury, because she's retiring. So I just wanted to point those two things out, that it's no coincidence that, you know, there's stuff that comes down from the state, but these projections are very complicated. And when you're setting the budget up, someone like David, you have to project things out, and you don't know what you're getting from the state. You don't know what, how many students you're gonna have. So setting these budgets ahead of time is very difficult, and it's no coincidence that Yarmouth is doing very well. And I think that's a testament to all of the administration, but specifically to Mr. Flynn. So thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe.
Mark. First of all, it's good to see you both here. And I didn't know if that was an official, I'm sure there was an official announcement. I don't know if you care. Would you, would you like to speak to that?
At a school committee meeting.
Since you got preempted by Joe Glenn, why don't, why don't you tell us your version?
Exactly.
Well, this is my 18th year at DY.
Yeah.
And it has been really a privilege and an honor to be in the district. And I've worked with a lot of really terrific people here. And I, I really love working with Bob. One of the best I've ever worked with Bob, not just here in Yarmouth, but everywhere. 21 years as a superintendent, 34 years in education. It's time for me to spend a little more time with my family. So I'll be retiring on June 30th, but I want you to know that I am very grateful for the amount of time I've had here. And I think we've seen a lot of growth and improvement in the district. And one of the things that just happened recently is we're receiving a recognition up at the State House. I think it's April 5th, because we have increased the number of students in the low-income population and our students of color by 30% increase in students taking advanced placement. So we've been really working to raise the standards over the period of time. As Dave pointed out, we have a relatively, I don't know what other word to use, except a population that really needs our schools. And, but we. And, um, but we try to, our mantra is all means all. And so that means that every kid can make it. And, uh, it's just fantastic to see the number of kids, what they're going on to do, and so on and so forth. I'll give you one stat. In nineteen, in two thousand and three, it was a couple of years before I got here, over ninety percent of our students were white. That year, eighty-three kids dropped out of school. Last year, in the current year, uh, just under sixty-five percent of our students are white. And, um, you know the, you know, the low-income population too. And last year, we had ten kids that dropped out. Primarily kids that came to this country, probably, uh, in their high school years. Parents really need them to work. Uh, not so much anything related to school, but just circumstances of their birth. So we're really proud of what we've accomplished. And, uh, I'd like to think that some of the success is not just a brand-new, beautiful school building, but the hard work that's going on inside to make sure that all of our kids have a successful future. So thanks for your, the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol, and I'm sure I speak for the board and wish you the very best going forward and, um, an appreciation for your service.
Thank you.
You know, I think in looking at the moment that we're in right now, the time that we're in right now, I, I think, um, we've had some challenging times. And you've had to provide leadership during some very difficult times. And it's, while it's tough to leave, um, you know, we're seeing some good things finally come together. And it's, it's, you know, uh, you, you know, when you, we all have to make these types of decisions in our lives. And for you, I think, to be able to make this decision, which I know it's not easy. It's, it's, you know, you have a passion for teaching. It's very evident in, in your, in, in your work. You have a passion for education. You, you've very been very, very dedicated in your service to this community, and it's very much appreciated. And, um, it's tough letting go, but you, you know, it's at a time when you can see things changing and getting better and better and better. You know, it's remarkable. I've, some of us have had a chance to check out the new school. I'm looking forward to being there on the fifth. I have to commend you and the committees and the designers and everybody that worked on this project that had a hand in it, because it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful building. You've done an incredible job. And, uh, it's not just an asset to, to D Y, it's an asset to the community as well. Um, you know, we're so used to going to Matta Key, just, just thinking of town meeting in the new building when, when it's ready. I mean, it's, I mean, this will be our last town meeting at Matta Keys, and there's a lot of history there. But this new facility is going to be just incredible for our town meetings.
I think, uh, in the old days, people told me that, uh, Chatham Corral used to, uh, perform over at, uh, the Matta Keys School. So I think one of the things, certainly if I was still here, and I know the people coming after me will be looking forward to some ways that, um, the school can be, uh, really community-centered.
Well, I think, yeah, and that's the point that I was getting at, is that what you've done is, is you've provided a venue that actually will provide a lot more service to the community. I anticipate that there'll be real demand, uh, for, to, to use that facility. That'll bring more business, more activity, more people to Yarmouth, particularly during times when, you know, um, you know, we're, we're looking to, uh, to, to boost interest in our community and getting people to visit here. So I think that's going to be a huge help. Um, I can't help, uh, getting back to the details now in terms of the budget. Who do I thank? Who do, who do we send the thank-you letter to finally, finally, on state aid to education and to regional schools? Who do we thank for getting it right?
Well, I think there's a lot of people, probably yourself included, days gone by.
Yeah.
Um, but I think it's really the passage of the Student Opportunity Act. And, you know, um, just another little tidbit, um, the, all of the schools, uh, you know, we saw what every school was getting for the, the amount in the Student Opportunity Act money that included here. And, um, obviously Barnstable is a very high-needs district as well, so they were at the top of the scale. And, um, ours was the one-point-six million. And after that came Cape Cod Tech with around five-hundred thousand. So you can see that your two schools on Cape Cod to have, um, students to have a lot of needs. That's what drives up our costs a lot of times. We have to have those extra teachers for our English language learners. We're required by law to do certain things, however many hours. We have to provide those sorts of services and things like that. Uh, we do it very pridefully, and we're very excited when our kids do really well. But it, those are cost drivers that sometimes other districts don't have. And so, um, I was very pleased that, in reality, the state said that our budget, between the two town contributions and the state aid, that the budget could go up this year of four-point-one million. Our budget is going up three-point-six, or three-point-five, three-point-five. So there's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar gap. So I hope you see that as us trying to be fiscally responsible. We're not just like, oh, well, we could spend this much, so we throw something else in the budget. That's not what we did. We looked at, what are we doing now? What do we want to keep doing? Is there anything we can get rid of and do differently? And then through a whole methodical process came to this, end up, ended up with this outcome with the help of the state.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, it's so, it's so important that the state supports and provides the funding that it, that's essential for, um, the work that's being done at D Y. And I, and I, and I want to commend you for, during some very difficult financial times, sticking to your guns and insisting that we support the kids and that we provide the services that they need. Because sometimes those, that kind of leadership is often difficult to do. And, you know, you, you went, you went through some challenging times, we all did. But the reality is, I think, this boost in aid is a reflection, finally, of the importance of providing these kinds of services to the kids most in need. You've been saying, we need to do it, we need to do it, we're going to do it, we're going to find a way to do it, we're going to figure out a way to make the tough decisions. But to now see, finally, the state recognizing the wisdom of that thinking, uh, I think is, is remarkable. The other question I have is, there's, there's been a lot of talk about the collaborative now being in Yarmouth. I just wanted you to have an opportunity to comment on the benefit and the upside of the Cape Cod Collaborative being here in Yarmouth and being located at the, uh, the, the MacArthur, the old MacArthur School.
Well, Maria Lopes is here. She's the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. And, uh, she and I had the opportunity to go over there and take a look at it with Paul. And, um, we're really thrilled because, um, as Dave told you about the transportation being a cost driver. It is a huge cost driver for us. And now with the, um, school right here in town, we will clearly be able to cut down on some of our, what we call our out-of-district cost, uh, transportation costs with the building. Um, there might be some also, some other partnerships to help strengthen the programs because there are often opportunities for teachers who have a, an extra block in their day, you know, before we, we cut it all out. Maybe the English teacher, uh, spends a period of day or something over at the, over at the school giving those services. And I could see a lot of opportunities there to share those costs that will bring, technically, will bring our costs down. You know how sometimes, um, you know, you need X number of teachers, but maybe you really only need like three-quarters or half? But it's difficult sometimes to cut those positions in half because then who's going to do the job? We're all struggling with finding, uh, teachers these days. Um, so I think it'll bring a lot of opportunity just in sharing those sorts of things. But the transportation job one, absolutely.
I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I just have one last point. Did you want to add something?
Well, the only thing I was going to say is, I've, I've actually already spoken with the collaborative as, say, we have five students going to their program now, which is in Sandwich, and they're picking them up here, say, in Yarmouth and driving them there. So I'm already trying to work out a deal, say, well, now that this program's going to be in Yarmouth, maybe with our own buses, we can get those five students there. But now you allocate that service back to me with your drivers and vehicles to some of these other places that we're having difficulty getting to. So that's, while it may not be an actual dollar savings, it's almost trading services that's going to provide us relief and, you know, finding reliable transportation for these students to get off Cape, which was very difficult for us before, which maybe now they can do for it because they're freeing up several drivers for their own program, which is now in town, which will benefit us. So we're looking for that to be, as I, you know, an efficiency as well.
Yeah, no, that's very creative. My final comment is, I want to thank the, uh, the D Y for this athletic Hall of Fame that's been established. Um, you know, in Yarmouth, we've had some great, uh, you know, we, we've had some great leaders in the athletic community. And to see the schools, uh, create this Hall of Fame to honor and recognize those people who've made significant achievements in sports, and particularly those mentors, the coaches, that have really played a, an incredibly important role in mentoring the lives of so many young people. I think that's a, that's a remarkable thing. I think it's wonderful, and I just wanted to thank you for doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I have to admit, being a little staggered by the fact that we have two-thirds of our students that fall into that high-needs category. I appreciate Barnstable's first. Can you help us understand why that is?
Well, I do think that, um, wages, you know, people who come here to work, they do a lot of different kinds of work. Some of them are very much service jobs. We need the immigrant population here on Cape Cod to provide all those services, working in our hotels. And, uh, we welcome them here, honestly, because they're really awesome people. But, um, you know, so it takes a while for people to find their way when they first come, come to live here. I think that's part of it. Uh, I don't really know the whole story on all of the people's difficulties, but, um, that sixty-six percent is the students who are in one or more categories. So it could be special needs, low income, English language learners. And honestly, those things just drive up some of the services. And so I don't know why it's that way.
Have you tracked those numbers? Have they been going through the roof?
Oh, yeah, we have tracked those numbers. I mean, the state requires us, when students don't speak English, we have, there are a certain number of hours, depending on their proficiency levels, they're tested by the state every year. We have to have a certain number of teachers to provide those hours for each of those categories. So, yeah, we, we're tracking that all the time, and our numbers are going up. And I can't give you off the top of my head a number tonight because I don't, still have that in my head. But, uh, over the period of time I've been here, it's been significant.
Listening to your presentation earlier, however, it sounds like you've responded very well. Drop rate is significantly dropped, and our students are doing better. How are we doing on, um, standardized testing?
Pretty well. You know, one of the things that I, uh, recently gave a presentation to the school committee, I talked about how, uh, education in most cases is at least a thirteen-year journey from kindergarten through grade twelve. And, uh, sometimes when we look at reading scores at grade three, we get very alarmed because you say, oh, my goodness, they're never going to, what are we going to do? It's important that we get alarmed because that means we're going to do something about it. But really and truly, if every single year, every teacher that they have adds their piece and a little bit more, eventually we get them into those advanced placement classes and, and beyond. Uh, we have applied, uh, we've been, started, you know, we're a good partner with, uh, Cape Cod Community College. It's a really great place, and we're fortunate to have it here on Cape Cod. And so we have applied with the state to become, um, an early college high school. We have a number of our students going to, um, dual enrollment through Cape Cod Community College. So advanced honors classes, advanced placement, dual enrollment, all super important. And part of it is for kids to have a better understanding of the rigor of college work while they're still in high school. Because what we're trying to do is increase the persistence rates once they get into college. Because you all know, who've had children, and, um, if they go to college, it's pretty expensive. If after a year they drop out, that was a huge, learning is never wasted. But it's hard to, it's hard to swallow that one. So, um, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that the kids are supported while they're here within our four walls, so to speak, um, so that they will be successful when they are outside of our four walls. And so if we get this designation, it'd be a really amazing thing. We'd be the only school on Cape Cod. And, um, you know, we plan on doing it up big for the kids, too. You know, college lanyards, get to go to campus a few times, really feel like this is something important because it really is. Their futures depend on it, so.
Thank you. It's so important that people hear the work that you people are doing over there. Uh, we don't hear enough of it, frankly. I really appreciate the work that's been done on the budget, uh, to have it come in at two-point-five-something percent. In today's world with the inflationary costs that we're all experiencing is pretty impressive. So I thank you for that work. Just quickly, E and D, any of that go into, um, the budget this year? What is the E and D amount currently?
So, okay, so currently, it's not been certified for the most recent year. I've still been going back and forth with the Department of Revenue with some final machinations of it. However, going into it being calculated now, it was roughly, it was like four-hundred-and-sixty, it was just under five-hundred-thousand dollars. It was four-hundred-and-sixty, four-hundred-and-eighty thousand. I apologize, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. But it was four-something, it was just under five-hundred thousand. And to be honest, no, at this point, we were not applying any of it.
That's slow, actually, right?
Yeah, that's, you know, less than, you know, it's seventy million, one percent, seven-hundred thousand, so it's less than one percent.
Yeah. No, I, there have been years that it's been in the millions. Um, so that strikes me as being, um, very low.
Well, I mean, not this current year, but a year ago, over seven-hundred thousand of it was voted to be used towards making the first interest payment on the new school, so that that did not have to be assessed to the two towns. So that was a big chunk that was used a year or so ago.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Dan Durkis.
Well, the last time I saw you two was standing outside the new school on the first day.
Watching the buses go by.
Watching the buses go by. It's working, it's working out very well. And, you know, I can tell you from the perspective of, uh, one of the bus drivers, the kids are very proud of their new school. You know, you can hear it in what they're saying, and, um, kind of an upbeat and morale. And, uh, it's going to be really interesting to see how it all works out over, uh, the next year or so. And yes, I can see that being a big part of our community center as well, which is fantastic. Great work on the budget, thank goodness. We don't have any proposition two-and-a-half override on the, on the, uh, schedule for this year. And Carol, thank you. Thank you for your service. And, um, good luck with what you do in retirement. Watch out, you might become a school bus driver, too.
I've actually talked about that. I thought maybe I would either be a lunch lady or, uh, or maybe a bus driver, but I'm not sure I could really drive the big buses like you do. I have to tell you, I love it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Durkis. Peter.
Ms. Woodbury, thank you very much for all your service. Thank you for the budget. Couple of questions. Retaining teachers, are you having any problem retaining teachers and getting teachers? Or is this something that you live with, live and breathe with every single day?
We're having a devil of a time. And I don't think we're alone. And I, um, have been participating with a group over in Dennis that has to do with housing. And I know you guys have done some really pretty fantastic things over in here, over here in, uh, Yarmouth to help with the housing situation. Unfortunately, um, another, this is actually, I appreciate you bringing it up, Mr. Smith, because it's another driver of our budget. Um, we're having trouble, remember in the old days, someone would retire, and they're at the top of the scale? And we'd say, okay, well, we can depend on hiring someone just coming out of school, uh, and we'll save X amount of dollars. That's not really true right now because, um, they can't afford to live here unless they have somebody that they can live with. I, speaking of English language teachers, I have a wonderful English language teacher who came to our district, I think, a year or two ago. Probably a year ago, this must be her second year. She wanted to take the job, it was in the middle of the year. to take the job. It was in the middle of the year. She had a doctoral degree and she had twelve years of experience. So that means she's in the top of our step, the highest salary. She could not find housing. And so finally, there was a teacher who heard about it and had some kind of an apartment or something attached to their home. I don't really know. I think it was over a garage, to be perfectly honest. She took it because she wanted the job. So we're struggling with all kinds of people, like finding school psychologists, finding speech therapists, finding occupational therapists, all of those specialty fields. Sometimes we're having to outsource that to, what are they called, Maria?
Telehealth.
Telehealth, which is not the ideal environment for little kids.
There was a genesis to that question. I knew that you were gonna say something about housing and one of the things I wanted to bring up is the importance of housing, workforce housing, and we need to do something in order to have places for people to live on the Cape. So I led you down the garden path on that one. So you answered perfect.
You had a ninety-five on that test.
I can chime in with one thing on that. We, I just want to, I am also, we have another one of our employees that the cheapest housing she could find was almost fifty percent of her pay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's not, it doesn't bode well for the person or trying to attract somebody, unfortunately.
Right. If your, if your housing costs are more than roughly thirty percent of your income, it's not sustainable because, you know, things happen and you can't afford it. The, my other, my other question is on, on the charter schools and private schools. It, it looks like with the programs you're putting in, you're trying to retain some of those people that are going to the charter schools. Is that, that showing to be a positive effect in retaining additional students?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say so much versus the charter schools, but certainly, say, as opposed to a student going to a collaborative program with another building or a school choice out to one of the other districts with what we can provide in-house now and some of the programs we have, I would say so. So I don't want to make that assumption with charter, but certainly I would say with school choice, collaborative or other private schools, yes, if we can, if we have the number of students that warrant, say, hiring a teacher and a paraprofessional versus sending three students out to another district at forty, fifty thousand, well, then it makes economic sense to, to even create that program and hire those people. But when you have a student whose specific need is very individual, well, then maybe it doesn't make sense to try and accommodate that student in district. We would love for them to be there, but then if you need a, two adults for one student, well, then, you know, financially, maybe it doesn't make sense. But we're feasible if we get the numbers. You get three, four, five kids that all require similar services. I think Maria could attest to that. And that's when we look at and say, can we do this? Do we have the space? Can we put it somewhere? It's better for the kids and in the long run, it costs less money.
Excellent. Again, thank you very much. Good presentation.
Thank you. When Mark brought up the collaborative, it reminded me of, I don't know what the exact date was, Bob, you might know, but Karen Green and I took a tour of the former MacArthur School and saw the work that they've done to that building. They're putting in tremendous money. And there are millions of dollars of upgrades in that building. It's, it's, you won't recognize it if you go in there. It almost looks like a, from the inside, a new facility. And even the basement, they've, they've renovated all of that area as well. It's, they have, there's a, there is one problem with water due to the changing with the excavation and everything. There was a small area where they, they were trying to fix it up with the contractor. But other than that, I couldn't believe the work and they've enhanced that asset, I think, for the town. Someday, if that facility does revert to the town, I can tell you, it's gonna be worth a lot more money than when they got it. It's incredible, the amount of work that they've done. And Karen and her humor took a picture of me in the timeout room. There's this, there was this sign across the door. But they have, they have all kinds of different breakout rooms for kids with different issues and things like that. And it was, they answered questions about, you know, what part of the building was used, for what use. It was really incredible, the amount of work and planning that's been done in that building. And my kids went to that elementary school and I remember back in the day, my friend Larry MacArthur being out there every single morning, rain, snow, whatever, in the back of the building when the buses came in. He would shake hands with each student that came in with a big smile. He was an incredible guy and he, and he made a really nurturing environment for these kids. I'll never forget those images of him. And that's why that school has special meaning to me. And I'm glad to see it being used for, for those kinds of salutary purposes of, of rearing these, these students that have these, these special needs. The state finally, as Mark brought up, got around to take it into consideration, the composition of the school population, especially with, you know, English language learners and kids that, that have, come from immigrant families that probably don't have a lot of the basic needs that they need to have fulfilled and still have to go to school at the same time. But it comes to like about, if I'm, if my, if my memory serves me correctly, that bump comes to about one point seven million dollars, which although helpful, is not a meteoric number by any means. And I can see that with those populations, you'd have E L L needs, certainly, that would have to, would have to be addressed. But what, do you know what other components that are being taken into consideration for that extra money and/or where it's spent other than on E L L?
I would say some of the things are, especially since the pandemic, we've had to bring in other teachers that are, we call them interventionists. So kids are getting a little bit of extra time with somebody who specializes in reading or even math or things like that. So as you can imagine, and many of you know people who teach, but, you know, a classroom of twenty little first graders with some that don't speak English, some that really, you know, nobody's been reading to them at home because they didn't have any books and, you know, whatever else might occur. So it's really the academic pieces, too, that we have to pay attention to and trying to give kids extra, you know, we still offer reading recovery in our first grade levels. And that's a one-on-one tutorial for twenty weeks to try to get them up to the reading level that they should be, they should be in. In addition to that, our social workers, school psychologists, people like that are certainly very busy. The effects of the pandemic and of our kids staying home for a period of time are large. And.
Yeah. And these, and these kids that are learning English for the first time also have to be struggling with trying to learn these other disciplines.
Exactly.
In the English language, like math and science. And I mean, I can't even conceive of that. I've studied languages before, but as a language, I studied my other disciplines in English, which I knew. But just imagine, somebody that's English speaking, that you go to a school and you're studying Portuguese, for example, or Spanish, but you have to learn math in Spanish and you have to learn science in Spanish. That's a challenge.
Our teachers have special training so that it's, they can shelter the English immersion. It's called sheltered English immersion. And so they know how to make the language in English. They hook it to other things so that the kids can, can eventually learn to speak English along with learning to do the other subjects. There's no bilingual, there's no, you know, put it on your phone and translate, not in the classroom. So our teachers are specially trained. They've gone through special training. It's required by the state. And they do a pretty amazing job because you just can't imagine how well the kids perform after a while.
And you were talking about how when you first started, that I think you said the white population was something like ninety percent. And that in and of itself isn't the real meaning. Everybody spoke English.
Right.
All those white people spoke the same language. So you didn't need all these other support services and things like that that you need today. The dynamics of education have changed radically. And there's a lot of social problems, I mean, teachers are dealing with today that weren't all those years ago evident in the schools, or at least not to the same level they are today. So, so anyway, thank you for your budget and we wish you the very best in your retirement. And thank you for the service to the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District.
Thanks for having me here. Thanks.
Okay, next item. We have district improvement financing, otherwise known as DIF, D I F. Before we scare everybody, it's not gonna cost you anything. It's just an allocation of, of rev, of future revenues as a result of growth.
Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. And what I'm gonna do is go through the presentation we provided last year at the town warrant to catch people up on where we started. Last year, we came in and we identified the properties that would be included in the district. And those properties pretty much emulate the Phase One project. They emulate the Betterment District that we're developing, except they add a few properties that we believed that would be potential growth properties that may not be in the original Betterment District or the sewer district, that they can be reached with extensions and possibly create more growth. But DIF is a purpose of the DIF to establish a dedicated revenue stream from new growth to support infrastructure investments within the designated district. So what that means is, and new growth is defined very specifically with a DIF. It's under Chapter Forty Q. And what it says, and to break it down into very simple terms, you need a hammer and you need to create something new. That is, you need to build something to have new growth. So replacing windows, flooring, things like that, where you're not actually having additions put on and there is not a new asset as part of the improvement is not new growth. So that's one thing, rehabilitation and those kind of things are essentially, they would go to the tax base, to the levy. The other thing that goes to the levy is market increases. So as the assessor sees a market increase and therefore growth from the market, that goes to the levy. So new growth is very finitely defined as being new assets to the tax base in the building. Is the DIF a tax break? It is not. It is basically allocating that new growth, that very finite description, and putting it into the bond. Now, we're estimating that new growth is about five point nine six percent, around six percent of the total project cost. We estimate that that's gonna grow. Typically, when you do a DIF, you'll find that people would not want to tell you that they're going to build. We were fortunate to work with some very innovative property owners to have them tell us what they were gonna do. But what happens is, as the growth occurs, as they see the sewer line, they're saying, okay, I'm in. We still capture that, even though it's not in a report. We capture all that new growth. And therefore, if we're at five point nine six percent, we will probably see that number grow as a function of the budget. And DIFs usually, if you look at them, they provide you with a pretty good contingency. So above that six percent, you know, we may use some of that DIF if we see cost escalation down the line. Is there an impact to the property owner DIF district? No, there's not. The more DIF revenue means the less Betterment. And you've heard that, you know, we're looking at setting Betterment within a constant, with a constraint, the DIF helps us do that. Is there any special requirement for property owner DIF? No. The assessor, and to their credit, they have been extremely helpful, the assessing team in putting this together. Because this part, the first part was setting the properties. This part is actually setting the potential growth, which is a little bit more difficult. So no, there's no tax bill. The assessor sees the growth coming in and allocates it to the DIF and that is in the report and I'll show you that. Does a DIF reduce the amount of tax revenue received by the town? Now, the, the theory behind the DIF is, and it's a typical economic development theory, is it is the if not for or the but for clause. That is, without the sewer, you probably won't have growth. And that's been evident over the past twenty years. And therefore, that growth really belongs to the sewer project, which the DIF is encouraging. So you're really not gonna get new growth until you see the sewer project or a lot of growth. And the DIF is helping stimulate that. The DIF approach has three advantages over borrowing. It is not included in the city's debt limit. So anything you earn from the DIF and you're using for the debt is not included. Borrowing is a definitive revenue stream. It does not require new taxation. And the DIF derives revenue from the areas where the work will occur, not townwide. Therefore, the allocation is more equitable. So whoever is paying for, or whatever growth is paying for the DIF is going back into that area. So this is that sort of cycle. So one is the wastewater investment. Peter, can you see? Okay, great. Two is a private economic development investment. That's your new growth. Three is the new tax revenue for infrastructures. So you can see how it cycles through, that you can start at any one of those points. There are not as much predecessors, but what they do is the sewer line stimulates the growth, which stimulates a private investment, which then creates new growth to go back into the sewer line project. So it's a great cycle and it's a great tool that you use to basically not go after a property owner's taxation, not go to the taxpayers, but capture what comes out of the infrastructure project. One of the things that we have is in two thousand and two, your tax levy diversity was, as shown in this chart. You're at eighty-five point two-five percent residential, eleven point three-seven commercial, and so on. That's not too bad of a spread for communities like this. But over time, and you're at two thousand and twenty-two, you haven't had a lot of economic growth. You've had a lot of growth in the residential value. So residence is now paying ninety-one point two percent of the levy. So if we look at that, one of the things we want to do is in Phase One, which is your commercial corridor, we want to build that back up again. We want to build that commercial portion of the levy back in, up to reduce the impacts on the residential taxpayer. So this has two benefits. That, one benefit is obviously it helps pay for the sewer line. It does that without really taxing a property owner. And then it stimulates economic growth by virtue of, you know, that sewer investment, which then hopefully reduces the residential levy. And these are things that you saw at last time meeting, but I just wanted to recap them. Now, what we're approving at this stage, this is last year's slide, where you were approving the, the properties. And we've had questions on the map. Where is the, the DIF? There's two colors here. The green is both the invested revenue district and the development district. And an I R D and D D are respectively the district in which you collect the revenue from. That is, it is generating revenue from the new growth. And the D D is the development district where the work will occur. The green has both properties in it. The lavender, obviously, we're not gonna collect revenue for our own property on the wastewater treatment plant. So we don't need to have the assessors track the inordinate detail of new growth in that area. Nor do we have, we have two streets coming up to Route Twenty-Eight. And we really don't want to track those because the homes are too small, the properties are too small. And it's a lot of really small growth that's not gonna add to our revenue stream. So what we're looking at is the majority of the properties. And you see that some of that green is going off the path there. But we believe that there potentially might be some growth in those areas. And as a result, we wanted to make sure we didn't miss that if that occurred. So if you look at that, when we talked about that pie chart and how we're sharing multiple funding sources, one of the things we looked at is. funding sources, uh, one of the things we looked at is, we really want to make sure that before we start, uh, plotting the course for betterment and user capital rates, which is charges directly to the property owners, that we took every advantage to look at all these different funding sources. And you've seen these allocated in the pie chart. But what the DIF does is, as your growth occurs, uh, that expands its capability of providing revenue. So, more revenue from the DIF, less impact to property owners. So, where, we look at the DIF as that transitional funding source, that we know something about what the growth is going to be now, uh, but we know it could even be more. So, the DIF typically, you know, as I said, it's your, we have about 6% into the project allocated, and I'll show you where that's from in the report. But if we go even higher, we're going to probably set that aside, uh, so that as we are looking at maybe contingencies, it's available to us. And there's an entire, uh, funding allocation plan that is in, uh, there. When I originally worked in another community, we worked with Mass Development to create the pilot programs. There were five communities that worked in a pilot program to write the DIF guidelines. So, what you see in this document is straight out of that. It is a well-tested approach, when I show you the document. So, I'm going to go to the document itself, and what we can do is, uh, then open it up. I should put it up on the screen, probably. So, uh, so, the document itself, uh, I'm going to get this Phil Donio thing going here. There we go. So, the document itself is comprised of two essential sections. This section that you, that was adopted at town meeting, which deals with the properties and the organizational structure. And I'm just going to go all the way up to the top page. And then, uh, the section associated with, uh, these new attributes, that is, the development district, the development plan, uh, and then the allocation of a percentage of growth. Because we're early in the process, we're allocating 100% of that growth. Because, uh, to the assessor's credit, again, we were very, very conservative in our estimates. So, if we thought something was redevelopment and not new growth, it got cut out of the project cost. So, developers were kind enough to give us sort of future project costs, but when we looked at it, we said, this could be predevelopment. This could be, we're not going after personal property growth, uh, so let's set that aside and let's focus on what is definitively new growth. So, as you see, we have the map, uh, that you saw before. That hasn't changed. There were just some amendments to the map. We had some redundant parcels. You don't want to be adding parcels now. We didn't add parcels. We took out some redundant parcels. Table of contents is there. And I'm going to go over this quickly for the board's iteration, but also when we post this online and have it at the town clerk's office, people will have a sort of introduction to the document. So, the document is basically introduction to, uh, the DIF program itself. And I'm just going to stop at, uh, key tables. And these are some of the things that forty Q requires you do. Certified that you're only, you're using less than 25% of the area, uh, that the duration in a DIF program may exceed 30 years. So, we'll be two years into this, so we'll have a 28-year DIF. But let me go to, uh, some of the tables. This is, uh, describes our program and the sewer program. It is, describes the development program. And it's, you can see it's that cyclical issue that I showed you before. This describes, and this actually provides you with more detail. Those are those two charts, charts I showed you, but this is commercial over the past 20 years. It's pretty well, I mean, the flat line for residential is up here, I mean, in terms of, but it's way up here, and commercial is down here. We believe that once you bring sewer in, you're going to see some activity in that line, in an upward movement. And there are required descriptions, which is the breakdown of the total values and the development district taxes and the values and everything else, which again, to the assessor's credit, they were extremely helpful in putting this together with the consulting firm, which, the consulting firm was the firm that worked on the original pilot program with Mass Development. So, they essentially wrote the rulebook for the DIF with five other towns. So, the Phase One Area Development District, this describes the district, describes the colors on the map. And this is the part of the program which we already brought to town meeting and already received approval. And then, some of the same tables you saw in the last town meeting, in terms of the area that's involved and the total acres and the percent. This is below the 25% as required by the statute. And let me get to the, I'm sorry, this is not really in a presentation, but I thought maybe if doing this, here we go. So, this is the real sort of meat of the document. So, this is a short description of what the improvements will be. These are some of the projects that, so, to, to get to this page, it was to the credit of the Phase One Futures Group, the Chamber and others. We developed an email list of about 100 property owners. Working through that venue, we then sent out an online survey to property owners and said, what are you planning on, you know, for potential growth? We contacted some of the people here and then sat down with them and got in more detail that growth. A lot of this is, you know, growth that's already occurred or was underway, had a building permit, and that's a distinct advantage in a DIF. If you've got a building permit, you've got pretty much a guarantee it's going to move forward. And if they're under construction, you, you know what's moving forward. So, uh, some of the affordable housing complexes were yet to be built, and it went from a $600,000 value in vacant land to a half a million dollar value in growth. So, we were lucky that we went last year to capture the essential nature of the district and by virtue of that, captured a new growth associated with those developments. You know, when you see the Irish Village doing their work, there's some renovation there, but there's some new growth that we captured. And if we didn't do that last year, we would have missed all that new growth that we see here. And now, these are the numbers, not the numbers they gave us. Some of the numbers they gave us were far in excess of that number. These are the numbers that we estimated to be the, the growth. And then, some of these projects have a certain date, uh, in terms of their schedule. Go ahead.
What do you define as growth?
So, the new growth is not growth by market, not growth by redevelopment, not growth by, uh, by personal property. It is, as I was alluding to before, you need a hammer and a result, something new, a new asset. So, if I had a hotel and I went through it and replaced all the windows, did the floors and the lobby, not new growth. That's all redevelopment, rehabilitation, and therefore, that goes to the levy. If there's a market increase, by, by virtue of market increases in commercial, not new growth, that goes to the levy. New growth would be as if they have a 40-home-room hotel and they had 20, add 20, it's the new 20 that goes to the DIF.
And the, and the dollar figure there is, is based upon the new assessed value of the, of the?
No, this is, this is based on what we would estimate to be the new growth and not their total projects. So, some projects were in the $10 million range, and we backed them down to maybe four because part of that $10 million was personal property, was rehabilitation, and not new assets. So, what you see here, again, to their credit, to the assessor's credit, we refined this down and down and down because we didn't want to overestimate what our growth was. And, and we believe that as the sewer line moves forward, you're going to see a lot more projects. And just because these projects are here doesn't mean that we're limited to capturing this. And these projects, you'll see in the table I show you in terms of how the growth is moving forward, uh, they're in out years. So, uh, while you see this table here, uh, we've sequenced it, so we're capturing the growth as a developer alludes to when they believe their project is going to occur. So, if they said it was going to be in 2026, we sat down with them, said, you know, what do you think about 2027, or, you know? So, again, we were conservative in their own timelines. So, uh, you know, going back to that, you've got a hundred surveys, we're sitting down with property owners, and then we're really getting a more conservative approach to what they're, and this is sort of how we got there, the methodology to determine the private development. And I already alluded to that in terms of going through the process to get a very conservative estimate. So, uh-
Bill, will you always take, if there's vacant land and there's a structure built on there, will you always take the value of the structure?
Yes, and in fact, uh, to that point, in vacant land, that's a good point, because we don't take what we're already collecting on taxes. So, we're not going to take the value of, uh, the structure that was there or the land. We only take what the new growth was. So, we're not taking from the existing levy. We're basically saying, you're already earning this, we're only reallocating the money from the new growth. And that's an important step, because a lot of people are concerned that this is pulling money out of the levy. It is not. This is basically taking money that probably wouldn't have shown up for the levy if not for the sewer project.
So, to use another example, if you had a restaurant, you put a new roof on it, you put new windows on it, that would, that wouldn't be included, but if you built a wing?
Correct.
Then the, the value of that wing would probably go into the new growth, right?
Correct, and, and that's a good point. Those improvements may be picked up by the assessor and then have an inherent value, whether it's market or new value, uh, the, the roof improvements and those, things like that. But they're not going to go to the DIF. So, uh, and in addition to that, we're not taking any money out of the existing taxation for that building. So, these are perfunctory statements that we have to make on how it affects housing. And we believe that one of the key things is, if sewer goes down, uh, when it goes down to 28, uh, that it is going to relieve a lot of affordable housing projects from the obligation of building those septic systems. So, the DIF, by virtue of helping in that funding stream, is helping in offset some of those costs. Now, operation and maintenance of the DIF program. Now, this is the, you always have to have an acronym in the public sector, the PODC, the Phase One DIF Committee. And these are the designees. Now, this was in the original DIF last year, and we wanted to be very transparent about the fact that you set up a committee for this. And the Board of Selectmen will appoint these members, and it's a good mix of people that would be involved in it. They're not managing the project, they're managing the revenue as it comes in to make sure they're hitting their obligations. Because, again, one thing that happens with the DIF, most likely you will be getting more revenue as you move forward, and then, so they're helping make those decisions and make recommendations to the board is what you do with it. So, uh, this is sort of, uh, a description of every single account and how it's set up for a DIF. But the best, uh, sort of, uh, chart, I thought that was there, I'll break down the, flow chart to show you the breakdown of, um, how the money flows. But why don't I do that when I come to it? But this is a description on page 21 of each of the accounts and what the purpose of the accounts are. So, the way the DIF process works, that you, uh, basically deposit in the account associated with paying the debt, uh, the obligation of the debt, anything over that, you either decide to add more to that account, the sinking account, or you decide to push it elsewhere where you can use the DIF as cash for the project or to meet other obligations that are within the context of the project. Again, it's not something that you can push outside the project, it is strictly for the project. And all those project descriptions are in there. So, the financial plan is a direct lift from, and as we update the financial plan, which, you know, Bob and I will be bringing to you, this chart will be updated. So, as we talked about, you know, those percentages, this is a good indication. Those two white, uh, text ones are direct charges to property owners. Everything in yellow is an indirect fund that has been established over time, the DIF being one of them. So, uh, this is the finance plan right out of the finance plan document that you saw on December 20th. And, uh, this breaks down the project cost, and I believe you've seen this. This includes engineering. This is the amount that's going to go to town meeting, the 207, 244. And these are the particular phases, your first two phases in contracts two and three, first, uh, contracts happening right after town meeting somewhere in June of 2023. This is the breakdown of the funding sources, and this is a basically lump sum approach, so you can get sort of a balance sheet of 207, 244, revenue, uh, 217, you know, 862, you've got a $10 million, uh, advantage there. Now, as everybody knows, when we presented the finance plan, our upfront revenue is, is a little low, so our accruals, that is, our ARPA money and others, uh, are important to carry us through that period, but it all sort of balances out, and that's the sort of ARPA money and other balances, and here's all the other funding sources. Now, this is, shows a percentage over each year. Because we're, uh, not seeing a lot of new growth, I mean, when I talked to developers, people were saying, we're really not ready to reveal what we're going to spend and what we're going to build, you know? Corporate would rather, you know, when we get the sewer, we'll be more than willing to work with you. But there's a lot more on the table out there in the development community. So, the board and the committee, you know, may decide that you're going to adjust those percentages and not take the whole 100% as you see more revenue. That's another way of doing this. You can either take the revenue in and apply it to something in the project or in out years, you know? You can adjust a percentage to ask for more revenue and have the levy capture that. This is the chart that I was referring to. So, this is a standard approach on a DIF that was developed with Mass Development and the pilot program, communities of which one I was fortunate to work with, and Camoyne Associates, who was a consultant we hired for this. So, the DIF revenues go into Development Program Fund, and on one side, it's going to your debt, on the other side, it's going to a project cost account. One of them being that if you find you have more revenue than you need, it goes back to the general fund. So, there's no escaping or holding funds. There is more that, you know, there's a municipal cost account, a private partner cost subaccount, so you may have a relationship with a private partner, that they are paying the upfront cost for part of the infrastructure, and then you're paying them back. We don't have any of those, and this is a really simple, uh, DIF program. This is what the committee would manage. They would manage the flow of the dollars and report to you, the Board of Selectmen, and say, here's where we are. And that's on a regular basis with the assessing team. And what we're working with the assessing team is, actually, we're taking this a step further, having the consultants say, okay, how does the cash flow, where are the accounts, and setting that all up before we even implement the DIF. So, here's all those funds that I mentioned, uh, the subaccounts and everything else that are up there. Impact on taxing jurisdictions, these are all statutory references that we need to make. Estimate of tax revenues. Now, there is your table, your estimate of tax revenue. So, given those developments, uh, you can see as you go across that table, deposit revenue to general fund, total tax receipts, deposit to gen- tax revenue captured for DIF purposes. So, you can see it's a small amount to what you're capturing on that quarter. You're into $5 million in that quarter, you're pulling out of that 538 at the top year in out years. But one thing that happens with the DIF is you're not really ramping it up right away. Because as a development happens, uh, we're not getting growth the day they pull a building permit, we're getting it when they get an occupancy permit traditionally. We may get incremental growth, so as a project moves forward and it's a brand-new project and they're at 50%, we're going to get whatever the assessor believes is the appropriate value, and then it goes up and up until you've got an oc- permit. So, those numbers reflect those developments you saw. The number up at the top reflects probably, uh, the, uh, affordable housing project and a few others that are already in the ground. So, our early revenues from 2024 are because we were lucky enough to do this last year and capture that revenue.
Bill?
Yes?
What happens to the ex- escalation of that new growth? For example, if, if somebody has, to use the, the example I gave before, somebody has a restaurant, they put a new wing on it, and it's another $800,000, so that, the tax on that new wing is separated out and becomes-
Correct.
-new growth. So, let's, so that addition goes up in value over time.
Right.
So, does that, um, increase?
No, there, you keep the market, we, uh, the DIF would keep-
You split that out?
Yes.
The market would go to the general fund-
Correct.
-or the tax levy?
Yeah.
And that, so that- And that, so that, that new growth number is a constant?
Pretty much a constant, and, but what you're doing is, as you're adding projects, you're adding growth. So if you didn't have a constant, then you'd see a percentage multiplier on this as a prediction. And you don't, you actually see actual fixed numbers that are related to developments. And, and that's another advantage, you're not losing all the new growth to the DIF. You're capturing market value increases associated with that new growth. And the DIF is only capturing that new growth. And so it, it is basically telling you that whatever the sewer project is moving forward is what we're going to capture for our debt. And the sewer project is not moving forward, the market increase associated with that, it may be to some degree. But it's better to stick to a very clear definition. It's impromptu and a half in terms of what new growth is, the definition, and that carries forward in 40Q. So, so you can see this going all the way out to the end years. But the issue with this is we're going to determine whether or not we can extend this and, and how that happens. But usually you put it in place, carry it forward, and then possibly do an extension. But right now, we're at 28 years because we spent a couple, when you first start the program, you know, in getting the, we're being very conservative in the interpretation of the law. Going to town meeting and opening up the dialogue and getting the approval for the properties, we consider as a year lost to the program, the 30. And then by the time you're starting collect after this town meeting, you've got two, so you're at 28 years in a total. We might consider, you know, going to out years. But my experience with these is generally that you set those developments in play. And then in a project that I worked on, I, we estimated the condo complex that was under construction to be at 450,000 in value, they're being sold for 725. We didn't anticipate that in a DIF, but we're capturing that value, they're, they're capturing that value because it was far greater than our very conservative estimates. So hopefully what we'll see out of the DIF as growth occurs is these numbers are going up. And then we're pushing more revenue into that pie chart that was unanticipated. And then the rest of the document is definitions, and these are all definitions that are pursuant to the statute. The warrant article legislation, this was last year's, this is this year's. I'll just make sure and correlate that. The DIF map, and then these are the actual DIF parcels and their values. And then, so you'll see, you know, invested resident district and a development district. So this defines whether we're getting revenue out of it or we're not getting revenue out of it. And a pretty long document because this is almost 20 pages of parcels. But we're mirroring this to our, our betterment efforts. And then as you move forward, the assessor certification for the original parcels are in here with a memo indicating that some of the parcels were taken back out because they were duplicative. That's not a problem, doesn't really change that certification. If we were to come back in and say we've got new parcels, then we would probably do a new certification. And we're better off not doing that. What we did is take out the duplicative parcels. And generally, you put this in there, guidelines for entering in public-private, you know. And then this is straight from our funding program. It is the definitions of all those different funding sources. If you remember on December 20th, each of these paragraphs represent a definition of each of those funding sources and also how it breaks down. So our first phase in the DIF last year was to capture the properties, to identify the development district versus the invested revenue district. And then this phase is to say, where do we anticipate development? How much will that be? What will our revenue be? And then what will it go to? And it's pretty straightforward, it's going to the Development Program. And in all likelihood, this will be offsetting the debt associated with the treatment plant. Because as the pipes or the lines move, if they don't end up in the invested rev, revenue district or the development district, at least we know the treatment plant is there and we can stick all this revenue into that cost. So I, I hope this was more informative than, what this does, I think, is lets the residents actually take a look at the document, which we will have, we just have a few tweaks. I'll be going to CDC, I think, next week, just before your, your meeting, CDC, and get their buy-in. FinCom has already reviewed this and are in support of it. So it is the second stage of the program, and hopefully we'll see more revenue than what we've anticipated.
Thanks. Questions? Peter?
I hope your estimates are right.
They're very low, conservative. If you saw the numbers coming in from the developers, we're at maybe 10% of some of their projects.
Yeah, as you know, I'm a, I'm a former banker and, and I worked on actually some of the, some of the developers, you know, very, very early on, and, and your numbers are quite conservative.
Yeah. I mean, in, in one project, we were at $6 million and we're down to like one, you know, of that. So we wanted to open the door to the revenue. But I think once, as you saw, that flat line, once we see a sewer line, we believe that, there are several developers that said, I can't really tell you what it's going to be, I can't tell you what the number is, I really don't want to make that public. But when the sewer line goes past their development, then when they pull a building permit, they're, you know, pretty much in this process.
Very good, very comprehensive, as, as, as I would expect, given the author.
Thanks. This is the third book I've written on this, so. Been there, done that. Not as, this is the biggest DIF I think we've done.
I don't have any questions, Bill. Great job. Thank you.
Do you?
No questions, thank you.
Mark?
I'm ready for the quiz.
The DIF quiz?
Yeah, the DIF quiz.
Your blue books are in front of you. We weren't supposed to open them until we were done.
It's going to be true or false, so you got a 50% chance.
All right. Just flip a coin.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Um, good work.
Thanks.
Appointment authorization. I understand that this appointment is a division head appointment, which is within the domain of our town administrator, but it's here, I guess, for an endorsement.
That is correct, yes. And I'd like to make the announcement too for the public that I recently made the appointment of Jay Gardner, our former Assistant Director of Health to the Director of Health position with the retirement of Bruce Murphy after 44 years as the Director of Health for our town. And I'm just very delighted to make the appointment when we were able to attract Jay sort of a little bit later in his career as an Assistant Health Director. His experience over 30 years in the public health arena, level of expertise was just so far in excess of what we could have hoped for for that position because of his moving to the area from central Massachusetts. We were extremely fortunate, and he's just done such a great job. So we worked it out, made the appointment, and I, I just hope for the endorsement of the board on it.
Okay, do I have a motion to endorse the appointment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? Five to zero in favor of endorsing the appointment. Second reading of the annual town warrant is next. You know what I, I would suggest is, is as we move through this, some of this stuff is pretty routine. And on those matters, that don't take a lot of debate or consideration, maybe we vote on some of them to narrow it down for the next meeting. We've done that in the past. If, if you want to do, it'll save some time next time to, maybe you got here, what, 30? 32 articles, is it?
Six?
Thirty, 36?
36, is it?
Yeah.
So you knock it down maybe by 10 or 15, I don't know, or 20, it depends what you want to do. But let's look at them and see if we can do that.
I'd also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call your attention to, we have our handy one-page sheet, the one with the yellow. And, and that lays out all of the financing articles for town meeting and the sources of the funds for them. There's a little typo on there, Article 18 is labeled 17, but the wastewater is Article 18. But it's, it's a good one-page sheet to take with you, and we'll update that and keep it as a reference.
Think we're pretty safe on snow and ice?
Yeah, we, in, in looking at the warrant too, I want everyone to look at the, the front page of the warrant and see on your bottom left, there should be a little yellow 321, 23. Couple of, we're just tightening this thing up.
Yep.
And catching all the typos. There's still one or two typos left in it, but.
So this Article 1, just a, a budget adjustment article, that's all there is to say about that, right?
That's correct, and that's the construction demolition, we went over that, and we did take the step.
Somebody want to move that?
Chairman, I'd like to move that we recommend Article 1.
Wait a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five, zero in favor? Okay, Article 2.
Budget.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we recommend Article 2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So it's a five, zero in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we recommend Article 3.
Okay, let's look at 3. What's 3?
Enterprise budget.
Oh, yeah, okay. We have a second, darkest on that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we recommend Article 4, the water budget.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes by a five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to recommend Article 5, the septic enterprise budget.
We have a second, all right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes by the, a vote of five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to recommend Article 6, the wastewater enterprise budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on, what was that, what article number was that?
Six.
Six. Okay, let me just find six here. All right, we have a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Mr. Chair.
This is by five, zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we recommend the cable TV communications budget, Article 7.
Se, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend Article 8, the DY regional school budget.
I'd like to ask for one amendment, the.
What, what's that amendment, Bob?
The bottom line is, is the same, the 41, 185, 188. But the operating budget 2024 should be 38,848,384.
Okay, so that.
Are you suggesting that we switch out 41 for the 38?
Nope, the, the, the math across requires 38, 848, 384. And the total remains 41, 185, 188.
Again, that number's 38, 843, 384?
848, 38.
848.
384, and that's under the operating budget.
So that will be reflected in the warrant, correct?
Correct.
So that, okay.
So that figure.
But still, the bottom line in terms of the recommendation is the 41,185,100.
So our, our recommendation, that, that's just going to be printed correctly by the time of town meeting, right? With the change you just made?
Correct.
Right.
So we can approve it with that change?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that article with the correct, with the correction that was just recited by our town administrator, passes by a vote of five in favor, zero against, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend Article 9, the Cape Cod tech budget.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes by a five, zero vote, brings us to Article 10, Gulf capital expense.
May on Article 10, there was, the CIP approved 150,000 for Bayberry sort of Phase 2. That is not listed here, it was an omission, so, and.
Pass on 10?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just deal with that next time?
Okay, we, we would be adding $150,000, there's plenty of balance in the retainers.
Let's just pass on 10, that's not a problem.
Article 11, I'd like to move that we recommend Article 11, water capital expense.
Water division capital.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's a five, zero in favor, Article 12, Route 28, water main.
Mr. Chairman, what might be helpful is maybe at our next meeting, when it can be televised, that we discuss and then act on at our next meeting.
We can do that, recite the votes on that.
Yeah, that, I think, yeah, I thi, I think just give us a chance to talk about it, discuss it again.
Sure.
I think, given the limited number of meetings that we're going to have before town meeting, it might be best to take advantage of that. So that would mean we hold off for the time being on Article 12, no, yeah, 12, because that's wastewater-related. 13?
We're going to pass on 12?
Yeah, we'll pass on that because it's related to the discussion about the, that's the water main and Route 28, right? We need to have a conversation about that. However, I think we can take up 14, 15, and 16.
How about 13?
And 17, 13, Water Facilities Phase 3 Implementation. That is the, can you explain that one, 13?
It's pretty straightforward, actually.
Yeah, okay, let's go for that one too. So we're going to just.
I believe that's usually the pumping stations, it's a regular program they do.
13.
So we left off at the.
3 million, 300,000 dollars or, or such other sum for completing the third phase of the water division facilities improvement.
Treatment rehab.
And we're treatment facilities, yeah.
Yeah, again, I think that, I think the big-ticket items that might require some discussion and presentation for the benefit of people in the audience, the folks at home. I think some of these items, I know we're familiar with them, but I do think there is a value just in having a board discussion about them so that we can, it's part of our effort to educate residents in terms of the, the town meeting.
Right, the, the, the only reason I brought up 13 is, is you went by it and didn't say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Look at it or not look at it.
Yeah.
I, I agree, this, this could benefit from an additional explanation and stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're going to pass 13?
Yes.
Yeah, I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we pass on 13.
All right.
The septic capital expense, I have no problem deferring on that for the time being. Fire capital expense, I think we can vote on that tonight, that's a pretty straightforward, nothing has changed with that, correct?
What number is that?
That's the number of 15.
15?
So I would, I would like to move that.
Fire capital, go ahead.
Fire capital, I'd, I'd like to move that we recommend Article 15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes by a vote of five, zero.
And then there's Article 16, which is actually a pretty large number, it's 4.2 million on capital. And we, we may just want to literally touch on some of the major features of that one in our next meeting.
All right, we'll skip, uh, skip 16.
That's what I would recommend.
Go to 17, which is police cruiser financing.
Um, we've had a discussion about that already, I don't know if there's a need for any more discussion. I'm happy to recommend, in fact, I'll move right now, Mr. Chairman, that we recommend Article 17 on the police cruiser.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of five to zero in favor?
I recommend that we pass on the wastewater article.
Is one, we'll skip 18. Go to.
Now, Article 19 is.
I, I think we should pass.
Skip on DIF?
Yep.
Which is, is a related article.
Yep.
And then 20, interest rate for sewer betterments.
I think we should wait on that one too, because it's all tied together for water and wastewater.
So we'll, all right, 21 is Higgins Coral Road Shared Use Path Phase 3 Utility Easements.
We really haven't had much discussion on this one at all.
I, I'd pass on this one, this one just.
And I think it's for the purposes of explaining and having public sort of transparency and exposure on it.
So then we come to 22, sanitation, construction, and demo pad.
I'd, I'd, I'd move that one, I, I think it's fairly straightforward, just in the explanation.
Yeah, I do too.
I'd second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So 22 passes by a vote of five to. Anyone opposed? So twenty-two passes by a vote of five to zero in favor. Twenty-three is to replace a loader. I think we can.
I, I'll move, I'll move that one, Mr. Chairman.
And I'd second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes by a vote of five to zero in favor.
And I'll move Article twenty-four, collective bargaining wage adjustments.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes by a vote of five zero in favor. Active shooter training.
Um, I'm prepared to move that, but we might want to have some public discussion about that.
I think, I think.
I think that, that's straightforward in terms of the amount. Let's move it and we'll dis, we'll save it for discussion as well.
So we'll move past it, or?
Yeah, let's, no, let's, let's vote on it.
Vote on it?
Yeah, we'll discuss it. I think it's an important article, but I mean, I don't think we have to withhold the vote. It's, we're going to give a hundred and forty-five.
Then I'm, then I'm, I'm with you. I'm going to vote for it anyway, so I'm, I'll move that we, we, we recommend Article twenty-five.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? But yeah, we, I think that's important to discuss. Um, that passes by a five zero in favor. Twenty-six is the opioid settlement.
Move that we recommend Article twenty-sixth.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Anyone opposed?
I, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to this. I think there should be some explanation as why we receive such a, such a small amount.
We can do that and let, uh.
Yeah, the.
Well, know that there's efforts to try to straighten that out.
So let's, let's bring that up at a future meeting because there's work going on and hopefully there'll be some news to report, but.
All right, excellent.
So I'm going to, I'm going to record a vote of five oh in favor. We have your vote.
That's correct. Yes, absolutely.
Twenty-seven, appropriate tourism revenue preservation funds.
I'd move that one.
That looks straightforward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Twenty-eight, C P A estimated revenues. Terms of money estimate, yeah, it's community.
Very standard one.
Yeah, that's a house, that's just a housekeeping article. We have a, a motion to, uh, recommend twenty.
So moved.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, twenty-eight, brings us to.
I move that we, uh, recommend Article twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine is the C P A, um, allocations.
For housing.
Yes.
So, yep. So we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, brings us to Article thirty.
That we recommend Article thirty.
Second.
Community housing project amendment.
That's to allow homeownership or rental.
Now, what is this exactly? Can you explain this article quickly?
Yes, the original article approved the funds for homeownership, and what this does is it extends it to homeownership or rental.
Oh, okay. It just, it just broadens it.
Correct.
Okay, well, did I, we, did I get a motion on that?
Yep, you did.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Article thirty-one.
I move that we approve, we recommend approval of Article thirty-one.
One, that's a C P, C, uh, C P A, um, projects at Taylor Bray Farm and, uh, the H VAC system at the Yarmouth Port Library and the Friends Meeting House. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous vote in favor.
Article thirty-two, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend.
Recreation projects, Friends of Bass River, Y D Red Sox, D P W, um, River Walk, um, appropriation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero.
Not opposed, but I've gotten questions from people on the three million dollars for the Ri- Ruway Park, so this probably should have some.
All right, we'll, we'll do another, yeah, we'll do another discussion on thirty-two.
But, but I'm prepared to move that we recommend Article thirty-three.
Article, which one?
Thirty-three, the project fund?
Yep.
Yep.
That's the project financing for the boardwalk project.
Exactly.
What we're doing is we're authorizing bonding.
You're talking thirty-two.
No, no, we're talking thirty-three.
You're talking thirty-three.
Thirty-three is a, is an article for the bonding authorization.
Open space recreation project bond. Oh, yeah, okay. That's for the bond, right?
Yep.
For the Riverwalk Park, which is a three million dollar bond. Um, so we have a motion.
I'll second it.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously, and it brings us to number thirty-four. We're going to pass on that, right? Because we.
Typically, on these petitioned articles, we will, we generally vote on, on, on the floor.
On, on all the petitioned articles. Yeah.
We may not have an answer for you, though.
I doubt you will.
We haven't even had anybody present these articles to us yet, Chris, just for the, just so you know.
I, I know, but one of the questions I have is whether or not, uh, markets such as Peterson's or Shaw's and Stop and Shop have been informed about what these implications would be for them.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I think this is very serious, and I have to tell you, I had the experience to, just two days ago, of a restaurant where they gave me a pa, a, literally a carburety paper thing to take the food home, and the mess on my car seat from it going through, um, soaking through was not pretty.
Didn't eat it, cooking it, of course.
Um, and I also, on the next article, and I realize I'm heading ahead of word of it, I don't know if you've seen the research reports that have come out this week in Dorcas, they don't want you to throw up, but they're talking about the fact that the re, the reusable, um, containers like that, they're discovering have more bacteria on them than toilet seats. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to, uh, thank, thank you for your input. We're going to, um, recommend from the floor on these, on these petitioned articles, correct?
Correct. Do we need to vote on that? Probably do, Mr. Chairman. Petitioned articles that we recommend for the floor.
Sure, just for clarification.
I'm going to move that we recommend the petitioned articles from the floor.
Okay, which are Articles thirty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And thirty-six, correct?
Yep.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So we will be deferring until the, um, town meeting on those three articles?
Yep.
So Bob, what does that leave us in terms of articles not voted on? Have you been tracking this?
I, I sure have, but I'm not on the same sheet, so let's.
Make sure we all agree what we, I mean, we, we do have some that are approved that we're going to have for discussion.
Yes.
But the key articles, it starts with, um, that are going on three twenty-eight is Article twelve, which is the Route twenty-eight water main.
Mm-hmm.
Article.
You got Gulf that got picked up by the addition of the one fifty.
So twelve has been deferred?
Ten.
Golf capital, ten.
Yeah, golf at ten where we add one fifty for Bayberry.
Ten also?
Yeah.
Yep. So we got ten, eleven, excuse me, ten.
Twelve.
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 Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Waste water facilities.
Ten, twelve, thirteen. What's next?
And then fourteen, the septic.
Yeah.
Then sixteen, the capital.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then we get to eighteen, wastewater phase one. Nineteen, the diff. Twenty, interest rate for sewer betterments.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-one, Higgins Crow Road utility easements.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, that's it.
And from the floor for the last three.
All right, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have nine other articles to consider at the next meeting and to vote on.
That should be fine, shouldn't it?
Right. On the petitioned article, do we know if anyone's going to come in and explain them to us and the public? We have that scheduled. Oh, it is scheduled. Good, good.
Just, uh, Mr. Chairman, on the last petition article, it says five to one. It should say one to five in terms of the vote from the finance committee. It was carried forth. It was a mistake in their report. We'll reissue the report.
Last one?
Yeah, and the last.
Finance committee does not recommend. Why would we change that already?
What, what number, what number are we talking about?
I'm sorry, you already got it. Okay.
Yeah, that was what, why we had the, the little three twenty-one, twenty-three.
Okay, all right, I have the.
Finance committee.
You don't have to worry about it.
Trouble, that's right.
Yes.
Because of our mistake.
Finance committee does not recommend five to one.
Uh, one to, yeah.
That's on thirty-six. Did they make recommendations on the other petitioned articles?
Uh, they should have, yes. It's all in your packet with them. We'll update your packet to put the correct vote in the last article.
Um, on, well, no, on the other ones, they are going to recommend from the floor.
Okay.
And then, but, but the one, um, they, they voted on was the.
Water.
The water one.
So on this, um, thirty-four. So on thirty-four, they did, they didn't do anything, right? They're going to recommend from the floor, and on thirty-five.
Recommend from the floor.
And then thirty-six.
They're voting against, no, they're voting against thirty-six. What about thirty-five?
From the floor.
From the floor?
Yeah.
Okay. So we got one, uh, one recommendation on those three articles. So that's good, because, I mean, you know, you don't know how these meetings go and how much stuff we're going to have to do and how much time it's going to take, so it's good to get some of those votes down.
Glad we did it.
And then we'll, um, you and I will talk about the articles, Bob, for discussion, too, so that we want to review the articles, even though we voted on a few of them.
Yeah.
Board wanted to hold some.
And we'll have, um, some department heads here to talk about them a little bit.
That would be good.
I think so.
That would be good. All right, anything else on the, on the warrant? Oh, yeah. Yeah, no?
No.
Okay. Um, let's go to Dorcas for board and committee actions.
We have a letter of resignation that we've received from Brad Goodwin, um, resigning from the Yarmouth Planning Board, Affordable Housing Trust, and Community Housing Committee.
Okay, um, so do we have a motion to accept those, that, that, that letter of resignation?
With thanks?
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation.
Was Mr. Goodwin not a, not a resident when he was on those committees?
As far as I know, the, as far as I know, the answer to that question would be yes.
Okay, then, then accept his resignation with, with regret and thanks.
Wait a minute, are you asking me if he was a resident or was not?
Was.
Was, he was not.
I thought you said was not. The answer is no, as far as I know, he was not.
He was not a resi, yeah, no.
Then accept his resignation with no, no accolades, no accolades.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept resignation. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So that's resignation's accepted with a five oh vote. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Um, put that down. And then we have D J Sullivan from the Community Housing Committee.
We have a letter of resignation from him.
I'm, I move to accept and with regrets and appreciation.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. Committee appointments, Mid Cape Cultural Council Representative, Marcy Livingston, Livingston.
Uh, motion to appoint, um, Marcy Livingston as a Town of Yarmouth representative member to the Mid Cape Cultural Council. It will be for a three-year term, which will run through June of twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
So who's making the motion?
Uh, Dorcas did. Dorcas made the motion.
This is making it, and, and you're seconding it?
Seconding it, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes by a five oh vote. Committee reappointments, Building Commissioner Mark Grills. Uh, my understanding is from talking to our town administrator, because I saw that, I said, what, what's Mark on there for? Apparently, his appointment runs for, what, three-year periods?
Three-year term as building commissioner.
And it's come and due, I guess.
Correct.
So this is a reappointment for another three, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I make a motion to reappoint Mr. Grills as the Town of Yarmouth Building Commissioner. The appointment is for a three-year, unexpired term, which will run through April of twenty twenty-five.
That was your motion, so I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Approval of minutes, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So your motion's on the March sixteenth?
Correct.
Okay. How about the February twenty-eighth?
I'd like to also move that we approve the minutes from our meeting of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
All right. Second? A motion and a second? All those in favor?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, on March sixteenth, I need to abstain.
Okay.
So do I.
All right. So we have a vote on the March sixteenth. Oh, are we talking February, you're abstaining, or March?
No, March sixteen twenty-one.
March sixteen twenty-one.
All right, so we got to go backwards. All right, so on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Mark, you want to make a motion to?
Uh, once again, I'll make a motion that the board recommends approval of the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Dan, you want to second that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we have three in favor, two abstentions, correct?
Correct.
All right, so let me just make a note on that one. Three, zero, two. Now, how about February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three?
We just voted those.
We have a motion, a second on that?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Individual items, Mark.
Individual items, um, I just, I just had it written down. Bear with me. Um, yeah, I, I, I just want to remind the board again. I think the next time, this has come up a couple of, this is the second time we've sort of passed on it. And maybe we need to have it as an agenda item as well, and that is, is, uh, the, uh, an article for a town meeting warrant that gives the voters a chance to modify the charter, to rename the board from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, which is basically being done in almost every other municipality. So I think it's something that we should discuss. We should vote on it and bring it to town meeting. I asked that we do it in the fall. We missed, that didn't happen. I wanted it on the annual meeting warrant. It didn't happen. So, um, I don't really want to look backwards and figure out why, why, why we didn't do it, but I'd like to make sure that we make a commitment for our next town meeting that we put it on the warrant and take care of it.
All right, we'll schedule that as an agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on individual?
The other individual items, as I've sent information out regarding the number of towns that are beginning to take steps to ban the NIP bottles. And, um, I just wanted to mention that Nantucket has gone through it, and in the articles and the material that I've distributed to the board, there's some just very interesting commentary and success in terms of how that's gone. Uh, there's just more towns doing it, and I think, quite frankly, um, given the discussion, um, in the past with other board members, I think we should, we should actually put it on the agenda, discussing an article to ban the NIP bottles. I'm not suggesting that we, I'm not making a push that we recommend it or endorse it, but I do think we should really explore this whole topic in a very public way, starting with having a draft article that we can consider, and then maybe invite some people that have actually worked on this to come speak with our board. And it may very well be that we can do that through remote means. For example, for the folks on Nantucket that were behind it, I have no problem, you know, inviting them maybe to come and speak to us by remote. You know, we've got the hybrid technology. Uh, one of the advantages of using it is, is that it's easy to, it's much easier to get people to come and speak to the board through, through Zoom or some other remote technology. So my other individual item is that, um, and again, it's, 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 it's a, it's, it's agenda-related, is that we, we, we take this up as a draft article, and at least here from, uh, two or three other towns that have actually moved forward with actually banning the NIP bottles. I think.
I think we want to invite businesses that are affected to come in and participate in this discussion. I'd want to, I always believe, no matter what you're doing, you should always have stakeholders that are involved.
I, I, yeah, and my, and my suggestion was not in any way a, a, a sign that we didn't want to bring them in. I think part of what we're trying to do, I think, is to get it be, for the business community, people, the people that are involved in the sale of this, to also be aware that we're concerned about it. And, and maybe out of the discussion with the board, there may be some opportunities for them to take action. Maybe there's some suggestions. We, we've heard before, suggest that, that there may be suggestions. I'm, I'm interested in hearing what recommendations, uh, that might be out there from the business community.
Somebody earlier was saying that Rhode Island just did ten cent, um, deposit.
You know, personally, I think that's the, that's the solution, is putting a deposit on them, but I'm not even sure ten cents is enough. It was up to me, and, and, and I had to make that decision. It was up to me, and, and, and I had to make that decision, I'd, I'd pay like a quarter. No, I'm serious. People will pick those up, kids that are trying to raise money for Boy Scouts, whatever.
If you put a quarter on.
You won't see the bottles around if you put enough of a deposit on them.
Or for a dollar, that's a lot of money.
And even the ones that are throwing them away might think twice.
In our contests, though, every year with the annual cleanup, we see how many, who got the most number of nip bottles of clean up in the neighborhood.
Well, guess, 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 guess what you're gonna get for volunteers.
Plastic water bottles.
We'll eliminate the contest and the prize for these things.
But, no, I think, I really do feel that's the, that's a, a workable solution, but the, I don't think you can, you have to do that statewide.
Right.
Maybe we can get our, our legislators in here and get something going.
I think that should be on the list for the legislator meeting.
I, it, it, it just.
I mean, before the bottle bill, you saw beer cans and, and beer all over the place, you don't see that anymore. You really don't, not like you used to.
See a lot of trash, I mean.
Like nips.
Yeah, no, no, the nips are worse, but.
And what's the, and what's the uncommon denominator? It's a deposit. That's what it is.
Right.
Nip bottles, it doesn't cost anything to throw them on people's lawns.
I think if we have a hearing, we have a meeting, we have a draft article, I think these kinds of things actually get the attention of legislators too.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, and I, and I personally would agree with you, I think that's the better way to go, but I think the only way we're gonna get legislators interested in it is if we take an action that some might see as a bit drastic.
As a point of information, I, I sent to our town manager there, um, a copy of an article showing that the town of, City of Boston, which is a large entity in, in Massachusetts, is planning on banning that.
Really?
Yeah, well, not planning on banning, they're talking about banning nip bottles.
Really?
They were like stunned with the, the number of nip bottles after the parade last weekend.
Oh, it was Irish parade? Hey, what do you want?
All we had was candy.
Correct, absolutely.
It's absolutely very dangerous what's going on, that they're using that as an alternative to being able to drink and drive.
Yeah, you can't, yeah.
You buy a large bottle of Coke, you take a couple of sips out of it, and you, and you refill it with a nip bottle, and then throw the nip bottle out the, out the.
Yeah, no educating the public here, Selectmen Smith.
Okay.
No, no tips, no, those are my two items, those are my two items.
I'm fine.
I was gonna bring up nip bottles, but I was beaten to the punch.
I wanna comment just briefly on, um, the nice job that everybody did at the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Dorcas was there with Mark, and, um, our town administrator, I was there, our town administrator was there with his family, which I give him high marks for, really, because he lives in Falmouth, and it's, town administrators that live out of town don't typically come and support those things, but, um, for the last two years, Bob did, and we're grateful for that, we really are. I think last year, these guys do a fabulous job, and, and the thing gets better and better. I was talking to the President, and he said this year's budget was about seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, they spend a ton of money on these things, and some of those events are free, and, but a lot of them aren't, and, and they have to pay fees to get these people down here. The weather was tough, but, um, you know, everybody managed, we still got a pretty good turnout. Last year, I don't know if you recall, but we, we agreed that we were gonna call these Parade Committee, which is a small group, I think there's about five people at the most. We were gonna bring them in and acknowledge them and give them, um, a, a citation from the town for doing a good job. We never got around to doing it, I would like to do that, I would like to get them in, I would like to thank them. Everybody goes to the parade and they see the events and everything's fine, but they don't see the people behind it that are doing all this work, and it's a year-round project. They are already meeting, they have already had meetings for next year.
Right.
They, they, they're thinking about a date, you know, when are they gonna do it? They're thinking about, um, budgets, they're thinking about what went well, what didn't go well, what other things they should plan for, they've already started that process. They do, and, and it's a great, um, community event, and it's also a, a very positive economic event for a lot of our businesses. And, uh, I think we should, you know, give those people very honestly all the support that we can. They're a great group of, of men and women.
That's, that's an excellent idea, and also in the U.S. Congress, there is a bill pending to make St. Patrick's Day a national holiday, which I don't understand why it's not, being of Irish descent.
How about making Voting Day a national holiday, too?
Well, because there's not that many people that vote, but look at all the people that drink. Look at all the nip bottles, are you kidding me? That's.
Do we know if they'd be interested in coming to a, a Board meeting, just to maybe reflect and go over the parade and how it went, and how we might be able to, you know, I don't, you know.
I think they'd love it.
Would they love it, do you think? And maybe what we do is, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, as a future agenda item, inviting them in. Then maybe presenting them with a citation.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's important to learn what their challenges are, and, um, they, you know, what I like about the, the way they are, they don't just wanna do a parade, they, they are really committed to trying to make it better every year. And when, when you get people that are that serious about what they're doing, you know you're gonna get a good quality event, because they're, they're never satisfied, they always wanna make it better. They did have, I, I asked them if, uh, everybody showed up, um, because, you know, they booked these things well, and I think there was two events that didn't come, I, I don't remember the reasons exactly. And then they were disappointed because that group, the Irish, what are they, the Wolf Tones?
Wolf Tones, yeah.
I guess they're a big, I, I, I wasn't familiar with them, but I guess they're a big.
Big deal.
Group in Irish circles, and they've never played outside live on a float before, and they were gonna do it for them, but with the rain and everything, they didn't wanna damage their musical instruments, and they couldn't do it. But he, he's, they're always looking for first, like that, they're like new things, and, um, last year, as I said, they got the commander of Old Ironsides to come down, Billy Farrell, and she was in the parade this year.
Yeah, she was there.
She showed up with, with some of her, uh, her guys in, in March in the parade, so, um, obviously, she enjoyed herself, and, and she didn't cost them anything. She just came down to accommodate them.
I thought it was amazing how many people turned out for that parade.
Yeah.
Given the weather.
I know.
And, and as we were going down the parade route, I just kept saying, "Thank you for coming out." I mean, I, I can't believe that you are standing in the rain watching us go by. And also, I request Mark Forrest as my driver next year for that. That worked out well, we had a good con, and that we'd be behind the goats.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And I noticed that I pulled right, as soon as the goats appeared, man, I, I went right, beeline, right to the goats.
And I, uh, yeah, but you didn't think of me walking behind the goats.
Well, or maybe I did.
Maybe you did, I'm gonna put you behind the Clydesdales next year.
Or maybe I did.
And I gotta, uh, I, I gotta commend and thank, um, Bob's little guy Vaughn. He walked with me part of the parade, he was in with his mom and dad in the, uh, golf cart, but he got out there, and there were some little kids that, you know, had, had their bags open, but if you threw candy, they had no chance of getting any from the older kids, so I'd give it to Vaughn, and he'd walk up and hand it to him. He's a great kid, and he did a, he did a wonderful job.
Yeah, definitely. Vaughn, Vaughn written out, we gotta get him a, a certificate, a citation.
I'm all for that, I'm all for that.
We're gonna have to do that recognition.
Motion, we put him on the committee?
There you go. Yeah, I think it'd be great to get the group here and, and thank them personally for what they're doing. And, uh, to, to, to just add a comment, Mr. Chairman, um, the crowds were huge.
They were.
They were.
Even the rain.
And this is, this is, this is turning, it, to me, the large crowds at this particular parade with all the rain and all the, the cold, I mean, it was cold, and it was a hu, it was a huge turnout. And, um, so I, I think that the more we can build a, a, a stronger relationship with the organizers of the parade and finding ways we can work together, I think is to our advantage. Clearly, um, the Yarmouth businesses, that, the, the business owners that I spoke with, even though they weren't on the parade route, were appreciative of all the bus, extra business that came to their place, their establishment, uh, for that, for the weekend. So people are coming here early, they're staying longer, that, that we, that, that parade is turning into a, a, a real weekend event.
Right.
And so people.
A destination.
They claim, and I don't, again, th, this is just what they're telling me, is that they're the third-largest parade in the state.
We have?
Yeah, the Holyoke's number one, and I, I grew up with the Holyoke, that's a crazy place, you don't, you don't even wanna go. They drink green beer, and they, there's fights in the street, and everybody's drowning, everybody, they're, they're out of control. And then you have Boston, and then us. So it's a, it's a, it's a big accomplishment, and, um, we should really acknowledge the work that they do, and, and they're very humble people, when I talked to the President, and he goes, "Oh, well, we don't do it for that." I said, "I know you don't," but I think people should know who, who, who's behind this.
Yeah, I, and I think, um, when you see the look on the faces of the kids.
That, that's.
Isn't that it?
That's it.
That's.
I mean, that itself is worth it.
Right, you were out there getting soaked, we're all getting soaked, we're all freezing, but the, just, I, the, the pleasure that you get watching the excitement and enthusiasm of the kids.
You know what I, I, I couldn't get over is, they're so used to the candy part of this, the kids now, they used to, you, you just just throw stuff and they pick them up, they now have bags, like Halloween, they stick their bag out, and you go in and fill it up with candy. And Vaughn, Vaughn was great helping me do that.
I thought, uh, the kids are, are fabulous, and that's part of why I'm asking for us to be behind the goats, because to see the look on the kids' faces when the goats came off the float and actually started mingling with the kids was great.
You know that train they had, but they didn't have kids in it? He was telling me that, um, Desmond was telling me, the President, that they actually had a, some kind of a drawing for people to be able to sit in the train, but then when they drew the, the, the families, a lot of them didn't wanna do it 'cause of the weather.
Right.
So he said, "Next year, we're gonna do it with people that are local that we know, and that we know will get in those trains," 'cause they were covered, just like the golf carts were.
They were.
But that event is a new addition, and I think that cost them like twenty-five hundred bucks or three thousand dollars. But if that was filled with kids, that'd be a totally, the kids would be very excited to see something like that.
That was a wonderful time.
It was great.
Maybe we'll get, maybe we'll get Vaughn in the front car next year.
He could be our lead.
As long as he gets to throw some candy, he'll be.
Yeah, he loved it, he loved it, he did a great job. Okay. So we will do that, we will get ahold of them and set something up, and, um, now we go to the Consent Agenda.
And we have the DNR shellfish regulations and a revote on the old Yarmouth Inn, change of officers, directors, transfer of stock, pledge of collateral.
I move the Consent Agenda.
Give a second, all who's in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Town Administrator Updates, we do have a few, so we will.
Long night, I'll try to be very brief, but I wanted to let people know that Representative Flanagan followed up from his meeting with the Board here and set up for Monday, March twenty-seven, two P.M. Have a Zoom meeting with the, the DOT to talk about the Yarmouth issues, and, um, so we have, um, I know we have two Selectmen that'll be attending, Dan's on that, and, um, Chairman Stone.
That depends whether or not my case gets reached.
That's right.
I'm on a, I'm on a waitlist on a jury trial, so I, I, I'll know for the, I'll know in a few days whether I'm gonna get reached or not.
And if, um, if you can't, uh, make it, maybe handoff, uh, another Selectman can, can sit in, 'cause I think we could have two without posting, and then we'll report back to the Board on everything.
So who's gonna be there, Mark, are you gonna be there?
Uh, I don't wanna be the quorum, that's why, so, I mean, if you two are doing it then, but if, if you wanna pitch me as an alternate, huh?
You're probably the most knowledgeable person on the, the subject, I would like it if you were there.
But you'll be in court, won't you?
I, I was gonna take the time off of work.
You are?
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm gonna need you to do the video.
I'll find a substitute.
I won't do it Monday, I won't do it Monday if I get reached, I'll do it, but you gotta do that video for me.
All right.
Well, I'm, I'll be happy to fill in if someone can't make it, all right, Bob?
Absolutely, we'll.
Date again, it's twenty-seven.
When will I know, when will I know about Monday, by, by what?
An invite.
Tomorrow, Thursday?
And it's Zoom, right?
Yes.
I think for sure.
Let me try to see if I can find out for you.
It's a delayed day, I don't mind. Right.
And I just wanted to let the Board know also that we've had some additional meetings with our Airport Consultant, and me, a meeting with the, the Airport Management and their consultants doing the E.I.R. When they did their initial draft scope, we were not a hundred percent satisfied that all of the information that we brought out was listed in there for specific, um, work to be done, and, you know, we resolved, I think, a good deal of those issues, and I just wanted to let you know from, you know, we had the detailed comments that we sent in on the environmental review from the airport, and we're following up with those to ensure that all of those issues that the Town of Yarmouth are included in the, the scoping, all of the study of the runway for the need, the additional data from all of the airlines, the issues associated with the flight paths, all, all of our issues, we're continuing to just push and, and work for, and I think it'll reflect positively on, you know, anything that happens out there. So we're just watching that very, very closely on, on all of the environmental reviews, and so, um, when the actual scoping documents come out, we'll be sharing those with the Board and hopefully ensuring that all of our issues are taken into account. So that's an important thing, and I also wanted to bring up the issue of our wastewater communications, and we're gonna have a wastewater presentation next week, so we can talk, um, in, in a lot more detail about that, but we've had, I think, six meetings, um, in a row in the last, um, six weeks, and we've made a lot of progress with our communications team in terms of developing, there's a brochure that's coming out, um, that we're working on the final language of, um, the specific financial impacts to each individual property, and, um, it's hard for a brochure to be very succinct with that type of information, but we have it all, and, and I think that, uh, you know, as it turns out, the financial information on this project is frankly the most compelling, I mean, if you can get any more compelling than that enormous environmental need, the way it's working out with the financials at fifteen thousand a home compared to, um, you know, what should be fifty thousand, I, I think that's one of our best-selling points, so, um, we're working those out. We have another meeting this Thursday, um, and, um, we're gonna meet at three o'clock over at the Chamber Building, so if anyone is around, if you wanna attend, um, but we hope to get the information out there. And the, the key thing that I, I wanna make sure everyone is aware as well, is that, um, with our communications team, you know, we feel that it's very appropriate to take, um, a strong advocacy role in providing information out to the public where we otherwise ordinarily wouldn't have the opportunity because we can't get the press coverage, um, but, but also having a strong message that we're recommending that this measure be approved. And I think it's important to, to note that we've been working hand-in-hand with the Towns Council ever since the, you know, this issue started, and we've received approval, uh, that for town meeting votes, there's absolutely no, um, problem in having mailers and brochures that advocate for, um, an issue completely legal, totally different than situations with ballot questions. And also, Town Council has reviewed the detailed wording of all of the flyers, of all of the brochures, uh, you know, right down to the period and comma, and has approved all of those. So if, um, you know, any folks out there are under the misapprehension that, you know, you're not supposed to be advocating for the passage of a, a town meeting vote, that is, is not the case, and so we have the complete authorization to do that, and we'll be working on that. And, in, in addition, I wanna get folks sort of prepared, is we're outreaching all of the, uh, neighborhood associations in the community, sharing information, we'll be trying to meet individually, we have a team and a message for each one of these groups, and also, we've outreach all of the local, um, radio outlets, other media outlets, social media, so, um, we'll be trying, the, the key thing is, we're very concerned that, um, it is difficult to get into the living room of every resident this important information that people just need to have. So we're devising. So we're devising strategies on how to spread this information. And, and our feeling is that we don't wanna wait till town meeting and then be trying to explain how the wastewater works. We think between the environmental arguments, the financial arguments, there's a very compelling argument here. And so what we're trying to do is to let people know about it in advance of the town meeting. And I, I'd like to really thank the members of our communication team. We've got leaders in the business community, the Chamber of Commerce has been helping, the RAC Water Resources Advisory Committee has a real strong position on that, the project team that, that we have for town staff, you know, Jeff Colby has been on that, Paul Choffee, we've got Tara from the Assessing Office who's been doing so much work and emerging as another great leader. Members of the Board of Selectmen have been helping us out. I, you know, Mark has been doing a, a great job. He took one look at the brochure and, you know, told us, look, you need to change this to get all of that financial information on there. And so we've been working on that as well. And so moving forward, it's a lot of work going into it, and I, we'll have copies of the material for you. But I, I wanted to just make sure everyone was up on that effort. And next week, we have a wastewater update for the selectmen, and we can talk a lot more and probably have that information to distribute as well at that time.
If I can just comment, yeah, I, I've, I've been, as I think you know, I do office hours every month. And I try to make myself very accessible, just questions come up during my office hours. And so, you know, I've been, I've been anxious to get some material together and get the key points together for quite some time. And I'm, and I'm glad we're getting to the point where we've got things to, there, there will be information that will be available to hand out that provides people facts. The big questions I get asked are, how much money? Where is it? What's phase one? 'Cause, you know, we, we talk about phase one as if we think everybody knows, but the reality is, is not many people know what phase one is. And, and I have to, I have to explain it, it's from one end of twenty-eight to the other. And it's important to explain also that much of the, much of the impact that area is within the business community. And, and so I've been, I've been having my own discussions, just about anybody that I know in Yarmouth that's a friend that shows up at office hours, I've been telling them, show up at town meeting, Article eighteen, twenty-fifth. And the thing that I've learned though, in the conversations about it, is that, and it, and it came up, I, I was at the Board of Health meeting last night talking about county's septic system loan fund program called the Aqua Fund and how it works. And the thing that I've been learning is, is that those people, the constituents, the residents of the town that I talked to, when they know that DEP is planning on coming out with new rules and regulations that are gonna require folks south of Route Six, by and large, to upgrade their septic systems to an IA system and what it costs, when I almost introduced the subject with that as the lead, it's, it's, it's amazing what kind of effect, you, you're getting people's attention. When you're, when you're, when I'm, when I'm talking to a constituent and saying, listen, one of the things you need to understand is we have several articles to address this, but by and large, what's, the reason why you need to be there is because your, your home is at stake. The DEP is gonna force us as individuals to upgrade our septic systems. And this is the cost that we're looking at, and the monitoring costs are significant as well. The only way we can alleviate ourselves and our neighbors from that burden is if we do something on a town-wide basis. And the cost comparisons are dramatically different. And, and, and I think people need to understand that. I, in the beginning, I used to explain the wastewater project in and of itself. But having the comparison, making sure that people understand what happens if we don't do anything, and explain really that that freight, that train's coming down the track. And the only way we get, we, we get out of that option is for the town to, to move first and us to come together. I think that, that's probably one of the most persuasive and the most compelling points, at least I've found in my discussions with people.
I would think so.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm glad we're gonna have some material soon, I'm glad we're gonna have some handouts. What, I think one of the reasons why the material's helpful is, is it's important that those of us that are advocating for Article eighteen, those of us that are out there speaking, it's important that there's consistency in what we're saying or the kinds of points that we really wanna touch on. Like, we finally have some numbers that we can actually refer to. A lot of work has been done to figure out how you explain the numbers. And I think the more we're somewhat consistent in terms of explaining the key components of the project, I think the easier it will be for people to retain everything.
Consistency is critically important.
See, I think that one of the, one of the reasons why wastewater failed at the two thousand and eleven town meeting is the lack of consistency in terms of the message and the lack of discipline in terms of focusing on the, 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 there was, it was easy to provide a lot of misinformation. There was a fair amount of misinformation about what we were doing, who would benefit.
And the funding mechanisms weren't there like they are this time either.
Yeah.
There's a big fear factor about people not being able to afford to stay in their homes, I remember that.
Well, I, I think quite frankly, when, when I, when I've explained to people that when you look at this project, it's two-hundred-and-seven million, we're going from one end of twenty-eight to the other, eighty-five percent of the beneficiaries are largely within the business community. We've been able to bring funding down to such a point that we're looking at, you know, fifteen percent of the cost we need to basically pay for through betterments.
And with pre-planned.
Yeah, and, and, and there's been a tremendous amount of pre-planning in terms of raising the funding. When people get the basic components of it, they're pretty, they, they're, they're pretty well onboard.
It's like, and I can't emphasize enough, it's not going away, it's something you gotta face. And if you face it tomorrow, it's gonna cost you more money.
So I'm, I'm glad, Bob, that there's material coming together. I'm glad you've been working with this group to sort of pull everything together, to get all the information. I know I've been a bit cranky in terms of insisting that we, you know, have some basic facts in there that can help people understand and digest what's going on. But I think we're, we're at a point where I think this material's gonna be very good.
Bob, I have this, excuse me, I have this signature page in here, is this for the warrant? I just wanna make sure if it's anything we signed, we get everybody.
I, I think you can hold off.
Hold off on that, okay, so there are other documents in here that I wanted to ask you about. Oh, what about this employment agreement with the chief? Fire chief.
We, that, I didn't know that that was in your, in your packet, I, we.
It was in the signature folder. Has that been resolved yet?
It has, it has, and I was gonna put it on for, just like, I think it was like Friday night or something.
Huh?
Got, just got confirmation that he's onboard a hundred percent, everything's.
He signed it.
Everything's worked out, he signed it, and so I hadn't seen his signature. I spoke to him on the telephone, and I know he's happy. So you can either sign it, or we could put it on for next week in executive session to go over any.
What you wanna do on that, you wanna put it on for executive session?
Yeah, I think it'd be great to have a conversation, yeah.
All right, so I'm not gonna do that one. And. Is this the shellfish thing?
I think we have to sign that. We approve that in the consent agenda, so we can.
Yeah, we have to sign that.
So while we're doing that, is it okay to make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Here you go, Dorcas, you can sign off on that one.
Thank you.